Well.
I'm really sorry to hear this. I like him.
I can be a blazer.
I was wondering, I thought maybe he goes to the center room. Wow.
Okay.
Just to bring you up to speed.
Yeah. That's always, never a normal moment, I guess. Well, I never think that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. That's when I started.
Are you able to access your documents?
No. Pete has a lock.
Oh, he has a lock. Okay. I thought he just did that, but maybe there's another step.
Nope. He doesn't get his documents. He's being made in parole.
Yeah, it's a form of punishment, I guess.
See if that was Nancy. Whose facilities maintenance management? That's Scott. That's facilities. I like this one. Here's what it is. The tram is peeling off, so it's pre-glued.
I don't know if he's had two.
Hell, I can't believe I read the whole thing.
Good. Can I have your copy? Because I can't access any of the documents.
It's got all my notes in it now.
Okay, I'll read those.
You can read those.
Okay. I'll read those. We'll share them. We'll double plot on them.
So is this like musical chairs?
Yeah.
It creates more excitement.
For whom?
Anybody who wants.
Would you like to move your chairs?
No way. No way. I'm not moving my chair. How are you? I'm good.
Good evening, Denise.
Hello, Charles. I am well. Just digging my fabulous pen out of the bottom of my purse.
Since you kind of want to make this short and sweet, Mr. Walter, I will, did not get a chance to type up all my questions, so I will type them up and send them to you. So you can send them to the applicant for consideration at the next version, I guess.
Sounds good.
Kind of hard to, I actually did manage to read it in the car without getting carsick.
Not while you're driving home.
Oh, no, I wasn't driving. No, I wasn't driving.
Were you texting while you were driving to Denise?
I don't text. So if you have my cellphone number, don't send me one because I won't answer.
You still have one of those black telephones?
Um, I do, but it's not plugged in. But when I, I know where it is. It's in the basement. I like the.
They're awesome.
The dial one. It's an antique. I'm just too cheap. I don't want to pay.
Are we not able to see the documents?
Trust me, it's visible, I know, but that's about the only way.
Oh, for the reading?
Track of my kids.
What's that?
I just call mine. He answers every time.
Oh, yeah.
Which is good.
Click on the item.
I get about 80%.
Is it coming up now?
I get about 99%.
I just saw you something lit up.
Which is pretty darn good.
Nope.
Nope.
He's on there, too. I'm not, I'm not on there.
Yeah.
I just decide, nobody needs to know what I'm doing, anyway.
Well, it is a little intrusive.
No, you think?
How's that? Just a little bit.
Nope. Yeah. Kind of about maybe.
Hey, Paul, I don't tweet either. Other than going tweet, 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 tweet. That's my tweeting. That's my version of tweeting.
I haven't gotten to that yet, and I don't think I will.
I'm too verbose. I can't put anything in under 44. He doesn't tweet either.
He doesn't?
No. He does text, though. I'm making him pay for his own plan. It's all about the moolah.
Yes. When it becomes their moolah, it changes.
He's being very careful about it.
Is anybody getting a lock from that?
Not me.
He stole mine.
Yeah, I got a document.
Probably. Got the executive summary?
That's what I was going to get, but it's not to be.
There it is.
Lucky.
Well, I just flipped the switch here. I should go back to the agenda one, right? Here we go. I just don't know if I can get it to move.
That's what I'll do.
Oh, wait, it's doing it. This is very primitive.
Technical difficulties.
Yeah. What happens with all this fancy stuff?
Hey, remember the worst we had to break out was the bulb on the slide projector blowing out. We always had a spare. We always had a spare.
Oh, yeah, you always had, you always had.
And if you didn't, you had somebody with a flashlight.
No, we always had a spare. We always made sure we had a spare, so we, if it, if it suddenly went, we could change that puppy out and the slide projector was up and running.
Yeah, I remember those bulbs not being very cheap, either.
No, they were very expensive.
They were a lot of moolah.
That's why we always had one on hand.
Yeah. I remember those days. Apparently.
Very? You're not that old.
Solity.
Oh, that's what it is.
Slipped in.
You can see the agenda, but when you click on the individual documents, they won't load. It comes up with the File Pro login screen. Yeah.
That's terrible.
I know.
It's such a stress.
It's your only, it's, you know, the meeting you're in charge of, and you think.
Something happens like that.
Well, I'll go turn my water bill in.
Get multitasking.
That's right, multitasking.
Well, if we can access the documents, can we have a meeting?
I knew I had to come here.
Yeah, each of the commissioners is logged in. The agenda and the documents actually show up on their screens, and you can highlight them, but when you highlight them and hit document.
Trying to avoid printing out. She told the city, she took it with her. You know, I always liked getting, when I was in the city council, those notebooks, because it was all.
Hey, Carrie. This was, is this the first hearing for this? Okay, good. I thought maybe she had a hearing last week.
It's been on the agenda, but it's been continued.
Okay.
All through the summer, I think.
Yeah.
I think it was on the agenda back in May.
Is this the first actual evidence we're giving for this?
The first presentation on the.
Okay, okay. So I didn't miss anything.
No, you haven't missed anything.
I appreciate it. All right.
Plan is not to take action today.
I wouldn't exactly say he didn't miss anything.
Well.
On this.
On this.
Give Chris a chance to get.
Yeah. Don't try to relieve his guilt. He's one of the guilty ones. Yeah, so if we can hang out for five minutes, we'll be good to go.
Well, Pete, the last meeting was, I guess, the day of our last meeting.
You don't know how to get that.
You can see the presentation, okay, right? Can't see any documents.
We didn't raise any concerns.
Yeah.
There was intentional collusion.
Wait a minute, I'll get that one.
Technical difficulties.
Got that one.
Maybe they'll just take a while to load.
Nope.
Nope, no, he didn't get that one. That's interesting. I'm getting, getting the ones at the bottom of the list.
She's kicking us out.
That's interesting. Yeah, I'm getting those toward the bottom of the list, but not the, not the ones above.
Yeah. Which ones are you?
Well, I'm getting chapter nine, getting the planning commission.
Had that discussion.
You got the comments.
From the very last document.
I got the response to the master plan.
Well, let's see what's happened. Okay. Only the newest documents have loaded, so that's the problem.
Yeah, everything from mechanics D up. So, that'll be, it's going to take up a lot of time that we can, you know, spend planning this. And it's going to have an added.
My recommendation would be to start the meeting, and we'll do the preamble, we'll have the presentation, and while that's going on, I'll upload the documents that haven't showed up on your screens, so that those will be uploaded.
Okay.
So did he use the Evelyn Wood speed reading method?
He may have. So the planning commission meeting for October 10th, 2011 is in order. We start with the public comments not listed on the agenda. Are there any public comments not listed on the agenda? Seeing none. We'll proceed to the master plan water update, L10-02. We have a report. Tonight, we'll be hearing the water distribution system master plan, and this is an ancillary document to the city's 2004 comprehensive plan. The purpose of the water's distribution master plan is to anticipate what the future demand on the potable and fire flow water system needs are for the city, to serve our urban growth boundary. The applicant is our Public Works Department. Their consultant is Wes Yosa Engineering. They're here to go through this process in a little more detail with us tonight. There are certain portions of the master plan which have to do with financing, how they do the projections for the future demand, how that relates to our comprehensive plan, and all those items are covered in a staff report, which we will be presenting to you on the 24th. So the staff recommendation for this evening is to listen to the presentation, ask any clarifications, questions that you have for us, and we will come back to you and prepare and present those staff report findings on the 24th. The most recent exhibits in your packet are the ones that you've actually been able to see. That includes the PowerPoint presentation that we're looking at. We have comments from Paul Edgar that we received this morning with respect to the master plan. We have a response to input from Clackamas River Waters, comments on the master plan, and we also have the financing plan, which is chapter nine revised. And with that, I'm just going to hand it over to the applicant at this point, so we can have the presentation, and I'll get these other documents loaded and be happy to answer your questions. Thank you, Pete.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. I'm Nancy Crossar, and the, we're excited to bring you this water master plan update. The previous master plan was from 2004, and this document has served us well. We have completed quite a few of the capital improvement projects within this document, and given the fact that that's, that's taken place and is, we've also gone over six years, it was important that we do the update of it. Some master plans we do every 10 years, some master plans we do in the five to 10-year bracket. The other thing that we are preparing for is a part of our charter, our city charter calls, calls out that we would roll back our water rates to 1994 levels, when we pay off some bonds that were issued in that timeframe. And the master plan was updated so that we can adequately prepare the commission, the city commission, and the public for what our needs are in 2011, and what we see them being in the next 20 years, and understand the costs associated with that, so that the city can make an informed decision on what, if any, they want to do to amend that charter requirement. The, we've put together a presentation tonight that will hopefully inform you about our water system in general. We can answer any detailed questions you have, but there's quite a bit of information in this document, as you all know, and rather than pour over it detail by detail, I thought it'd be important to provide general information and then take questions on the presentation, and then certainly on the document, and then we can kind of take it from there. And I would like to introduce Walt Meyer. He was our consultant for updating our water master plan, and he will present the slideshow.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I do have some slides for you, and I ask that if you have questions, feel free to interrupt and ask me questions. It's hopefully not going to throw me off too much. So, let me start by giving you an overview of the presentation. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the service area, and then about water demands, both existing and in the future. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the water distribution system, and then what the needs are for future expansion to serve the urban growth boundary, and the recommendations to do that, and then finally, financing, because that is obviously important, and questions as we end or as we go along. First of all, service area, right now, you serve essentially, more or less, there's some exceptions, but generally within the city limits, 32,000 inhabitants receive your water, almost 10,000 customers, and we are planning to serve the urban growth boundary. Now, there's a important element to water distribution master planning, and that is, when you plan a water distribution system, you really do need to look pretty much out to the end of the urban growth boundary, because the ability to reach out there depends upon the network of pipes that you have internal to the city, and as you expand, you won't understand what future demands are. And almost entirely, the sizing of mains is premised on providing fire flows. So, years ago, as, as cities made decisions that they were going to provide fire flow, that determines the sizing of mains, because you have to be able to fight a fire and maintain some residual pressure and have water available to fight that fire. So that's one of the key criteria that we look at when we are sizing these systems. Water demand, right now, on an annual average, you use about a little bit less than 4 million gallons a day. 3.7 million gallons of potable water a day is what you use on an annual average. However, that isn't distributed very evenly, as you well know. In August, when it's hotter, July, August, you use in excess of 6 million gallons a day on a maximum month, and on a maximum day, you use over 8 million gallons a day. And finally, on the peak hour, when there's a, you use over 16 million gallons a day of water. Now, there's an important element here between the maximum day and the peak hour, that demand is met by storage. That's what we call operational storage. So, the water plant produces water at a, generally a fixed rate, obviously more in the summer than in the winter, but they pump it to the reservoirs, and then the reservoirs are drawn down during the peak hour period, so that you can maintain the demand, so we don't have to size everything for that peak hour. So that's the existing water demand that's experienced in Oregon City.
Before you go on on that, that's roughly 17 million during the peak hour, which I'm assuming is halftime on the Super Bowl, whenever it gets up. That's the urban myth, right? But how much reservoir space do we have? We've got 12 million on top of the hill.
You have 18 million gallons of storage right now.
Okay.
A little more, but roughly speaking, yeah.
So we're just, we're bumping right up against.
No, no, remember, that's only, that peak hour only lasts an hour.
Right, but if you're flushing on the 59th minute and you run dry, it doesn't matter.
But remember, to meet, to meet that differential between max day, which is, let's say, from eight to 16 is another 8 million gallons per day, you're providing that flow rate for an hour, so you can divide it by 24 to get the actual storage associated with that. So you take the 8 million gallons divided by 24, and it's only about, you know, less than half a million gallons of storage to be able to meet that demand.
All right.
It's million gallons per day for the peak hour. So it's the, think about the units on peak hour, million gallons per day. So the peak hour times 24 would give you the gallons per day.
Oh, so if everybody did everything at the maximum level for an entire day.
Yeah.
Then we would.
Yeah, yeah. But you're only seeing a flow of 16 million gallons per day for one hour, and then it drops back off.
And what's our peak hour?
Your peak hour is 16 and a half, or, yeah, 16 and a half million gallons per day.
What is the peak hour? Is it four to five, nine to 10?
It probably has to do with irrigation as well.
I think it's in the late afternoon, yeah, in the hot heat of day.
In the summer.
And I have to go back and look at the diurnal curves. I don't recall.
Yeah, we've got the diurnal curves.
Interesting, didn't it?
Thank you.
And it's not something that, it's actually something that we had to look at the meter records and do some study on, because it's not something we actually are able to measure.
Right, no, I just, my concern was that there's actually an hour where everybody's flushing and watering their lawn at the same time.
Same time.
We're getting down to dry wells or dry tanks.
Dry tanks, no, no.
Not quite.
Okay.
Now, the average water use in the city is a, predominant portion of it's used for single-family residential use. Of the 3.7, 2.2 is used by single-family, and then the others, you can see, the commercial industrial is 0.66, multifamily residential is 0.55, and institutional is 0.3. So that's the general breakdown of your water demand on an annual average basis. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit about your water distribution system. Not part of the water distribution system is your supply and water treatment, which is provided by South Fork. But you, as a city, have a stake in that, obviously, and the good news is it's extraordinarily good source of water, and you have a good water treatment plant, so you do have an excellent source. There's storage. You have a pretty elaborate metering system, both individual customers and regional metering as you do wheel some water around. You have pumping stations to move water through various pressure zones, and I'm going to show you a sort of a graphic that's kind of complicated, but you have a complicated system, because you have a large elevation differential between your lowest pressure zones and your highest pressure zones, and of course, you've got all the piping. And I'll give you a little summary on that. Here's the storage. You have 18 million gallons of treated water storage in five reservoirs, and that storage is adequate for existing systems. And there's really three components for, for storage. You need the operational storage, which I showed you, is to meet that daily fluctuation of demand. Then you need fire flow storage, so that if there is a power outage, you can fight an appropriate fire for whatever timeframe is called for in the standards, and still have water to fight that fire. And then finally, there's the emergency storage. So if something were to happen to your source and you have to turn the water if you can plant off, you have some emergency storage available to serve your users. So for the existing systems throughout the pressure zones, you had, you have adequate storage. Now here's that graphic I was telling you about, and it's, the vertical scale here is actually accurate, in other words, you're serving down by the Willamette River all the way up to elevation 550, and as you grow in the future, that elevation continues to go up. And in any given pressure zone, you're limited to how much, you know, what elevations you can serve, because you don't want too low of a pressure, and you don't want too high pressure. And for Oregon City, the standard is, the minimum is 40 PSI, and the maximum is 100 PSI. So you try to serve your properties within that pressure zone, and to be able to accomplish this, we break the system apart into different pressure zones, as shown by this particular Water distribution system, the actual piping that you have in the ground, you have about 154 miles of pipes underground to serve Oregon City, and ranging from two inches all the way up to third, short pieces of 30 inch. Now, all your new piping that goes in is typically eight inch. You cannot fight a fire with two, three, and four inch piping, period. And even six inches, not recommended. It's, you know, if you had a short run of six inch, you could do it, but not particularly long runs of it. So generally speaking, the new piping going in is eight inch piping. And of course, over the years, you've acquired systems from older water, water districts, and in those days, a lot of times, it was about providing drinking water, was not about providing fire protection, and so consequently, you have an inventory of system that's, in some cases, somewhat small diameter. The 154 miles is important to remember, because it relates to the fact that that is a good measure of how much replacement do you need on an annual basis. Now typically, water pipelines have a useful life of 50 to 100 years, but I think 75 years would be a reasonable number. There's a lot of variables involved there, the type of material that you have, the soils, the type of water, et cetera, et cetera. And as, even when the pipe doesn't corrode from the outside or from the inside, I showed a little picture of a pipe we took out not too long ago in a water system down in California that shows what happens with the accumulation of crud. And if you've ever washed fire hydrant being flushed on a dead end, you'll see water come out, and it looks like chocolate, hot chocolate.
Scary water.
Very, very, very turbid, and it takes a while for that to clear out, and that's because there is accumulation of material in pipes, and of course, the older it gets, the worse that situation is. So if you assume an average, a useful life of 75 years, you need to replace about two miles a year, which in today's dollars is about 2.3 million dollars. So unless you're spending 2.3 million dollars per year on replacement, you're, you're not keeping up with what I would call a sustainable water distribution system. Now, as we looked at your existing system, we prepared a computer model. Really, the only way you can analyze these systems is with computers, because it's, they're quite complicated. And once you have the model, which you do, and it works well, it's been calibrated, you can do all kinds of scenario analysis. For example, this is an example where we looked at, can you provide the required fire flows? Identified with the red dots on there. Identified with the red dots on there, number of locations where the fire flows are inadequate. Typically, what that means is when you actually were to put a pumper on or fight a fire at that hydrant, the pressures would drop below 20 pounds per square inch, which is not allowed by Oregon code. So those are areas where we've recommended some improvements to the system so that you can in fact meet fire code.
Could you go back to that?
Sure.
I don't, it could be just me, but I don't really see that many red dots on there.
There are not a lot of red dots. For the most part, your system is reasonably good. You have some orange dots on there, but when I come to the CIP, you don't, it's not an extensive number of...
Looks like Park Place and...
Down by the mill.
Mill, yeah.
Yep, yep. No, generally speaking, your system is in reasonably good shape. Now, when we looked at the future, we took from the planning department the urban growth boundary and applied to that the expected land use. And then the land use determines how much base demand will be in the system. Then we take it the next step and also look at what likely fire flows will be, and that's how we determine the sizes of pipes that will be needed to serve the future. Now, you can see, when you were to, if and when, it's probably not so much if, but if and when you build out to the urban growth boundary that you have today, demands essentially double. You can see the average day demand is up a little bit over 6 million gallons per day. The max month is 12 million gallons a day. The max day is up around 16 million gallons a day, and of course, the max hour is up around 32 million gallons a day. So when Oregon City expands its water distribution system out to the urban growth boundary, your water demand will approximately double.
And that's based on what...
Based upon the land use that planning is currently projecting for the urban growth boundary.
I guess one of the things that I have a question about is, I think that the growth rate is a little bit inflated. I think based on trends and what we're seeing now, we are not going to be growing.
And you're...
And so I guess my question is, what sort of an aggressive, it seemed like the growth rate that was being projected in the plan was aggressive, and I was kind of wondering, based on what percentage...
The planning in the plan is based upon buildout without putting a timeframe on it. And as, as you expand beyond the urban growth, beyond the existing city limits and people want to develop and annex, that process will drive the need to provide facilities. So we're not, and we're not going out and building, in fact, our CIP that I will show you today does not include future lines. Those future lines will be built as the demand comes along. They can be funded, funded from system development charges, as they should be, and it'll be, it'll depend where the growth pressure comes to the city. So as developers start building again and needing service beyond the existing city limits and wanting to annex, that's when the negotiation for expanding service will have to take place. But I have put no timeframe on meeting this demand here. It's simply build out to the urban growth boundary, but that's what you have to plan for. So when you build that first increment of expansion, you will be building it so that it can serve out to the urban growth boundary.
So that we understand what the pipe sizes need to be along the way. Does that make sense?
If you were to serve, if the first person that came along and wanted to develop right adjacent to the city limits, you may only need an eight inch pipe to serve that area, but you'll need a 12 inch to serve. That pipe needs to be a 12 inch so that it can serve on out as you expand.
And it's, the, the analysis for demand is somewhat based on average consumption of what we consume as a city today, and Chapter 3 elaborates on that completely, if you're interested in the details of how we've arrived at the future water demand for UGB areas.
Okay, and if I'm getting ahead of myself, let me know, but I'm just wondering, you know, you have the water system, what part of the water system will be built by the city, and then what part will be driven by the revenues generated from development? Do you guys have any...
The improvements that are in the CIP are improvements necessary to meet the fire flows we talked about, some other improvements. Those will be, and renewal of old lines that need to be replaced. Those are funded from the CIP by the city. As the demand comes to expand beyond the city, that, you have an ordinance in place whereby a developer wants to build a development, and the master plan will tell you that we need a 12 inch line. And he says, well, yeah, we need an eight inch line, and there is a formula in your ordinance that allows you to reimburse the developer for portion of that cost.
Using system development charges.
Using system development charges.
In lieu of building the facility.
Essentially for them oversizing the pipe. They pay for the four inches, they pay for the eight inches.
It's been that way for a number of years.
Right. Okay. Yes?
Can you back up one slide then? Am I able to access Chapter 3?
Have not been able to upload any of those documents, so we, they were in the packet, so they have been entered into the record already.
Which is fine, but my question is, is I don't see enough between the city and the urban growth boundary to justify doubling capacity or demand. I mean, 25 percent...
It includes the urban, it includes the undeveloped area, right? But also includes infill within the city of undeveloped land. So that's complete buildout within the urban growth boundary.
It might be interesting to, and maybe Pete can get back to you on this, or you may already know this, but it'd be interesting to look at what our projected population would be for the urban growth boundary, getting built out, and that might help understand the demand a little bit more.
Yeah.
Well, the fact that it includes, you know, infill, that, that isn't evident from what you'd said earlier, because there clearly isn't 50% more city, but if you include all the infills and going to the zoned R level, because I know that there's several developments, well, like for my, my own property is, you know, it's probably built R10, but it's an R3.5. So just between me and my next door neighbor, I could probably put three houses in there just looking at the space, and that would be an infill that would triple the capacity or the need in that one area. So, yeah, thanks.
It should reflect whatever comprehensive plan we have adopted at the time, and then in addition to the unit demand that Walt has done, projected out to the UGB, should be fairly accurate. I'm not sure it's going to account for upzoning, which would require comprehensive plan amendment, and those sorts of things. We have to be sure that we can serve any upzoning, that we, that we approve, yeah.
Okay, and then I also noticed that you guys have reservoirs designated outside the UGB. Would those be...
We have...
...agreements with Cleckamas County or...
What we have to do, the reason we showed them outside is because of elevation. If we can get the reservoir further out, it'll be at an elevation that allows us to serve the area downstream of it.
It's the age old problem of basins not matching political boundaries.
And we have a reservoir out on Henriesi Road now that is outside the city limits, but it just stores water. It doesn't serve any customers out there.
And you can see off to the bottom right there, it's Henriesi. It's outside the UGB, and it's an existing reservoir, but it's at the right elevation.
Okay, yeah.
And that's frankly money in the bank, because when you can operate a water system riding on reservoirs, that's the ideal way to run systems. It really is a preferable way to go.
Yeah, we lost an ideal site on Stolt Road a while back.
And that, and this is, shows that, it shows the major pipelines that need to be constructed. And this is the network of the larger pipes that are needed to serve so that you can get the fire flows out to the urban growth boundary.
And then amongst those larger diameter pipes, there would be all the eight inch network that would go down each street, and we have no idea where those streets will be, and we don't even want to do that.
We're not even going to guess where they're going to be. And even with the big pipes that we're showing here, understand, this is, this is very conceptual, and so we, we're not doing alignment studies. We're simply showing roughly where they are so we get the right and get money and the plan for, but we are not doing an alignment study, so where one of those pipes is shown is probably not very important. It's simply the concept that we needed pipe in that general area.
From point A to point B.
Now, based upon the analysis we did here, the improvements we're recommending to improve the fire flows in the existing system. So the, this is a list of the capital improvements necessary to upgrade the performance of the existing system. And this is renewal and replacement, at least partial list of renewal and replacement. This is a list that, working with staff, we came up with are the most critical in terms of where they've had the most problems. And it also includes the seismic and mixing improvements for the Pointe Reservoir. But you can see there's quite a bit of pipeline work required to keep the system up to snuff. There are other projects which we did not include because simply they're not funded, there's not, there wasn't enough funding, and that's why when we talk financing, we're going to talk about the need for revenue.
Yeah, and some of those projects, we call that Eli's List, and I neglected to introduce Eli DeBarry, who's our water supervisor, and John Burrell, who is, was the project manager for the master plan. But Eli's List is a list of pipelines that through their experience on the water team, they know where they've had breaks, sometimes multiple breaks, and those are the ones that he knows need to be replaced. And those are more considered part of that 75-year, two miles a year kind of a pipe replacement program that is important for the city to get moved towards, but that kind of gets into future financing issues.
Now, I'm going to show you, this is, this is a list, but for every project we've identified, the master plan has in it a sheet that shows the location, the cost of the project, the size of the pipe required, et cetera. And this is just an example of one of those sheets that, that is going to be used in the future as the CIP projects are implemented. Now, I'm going to talk finances a little bit, the fun part, right? This is just a record of the revenue and the operating expenses that you've incurred for the last five fiscal years. And what you can see is, and the difference between the revenue and the expenses is the money you have spent on capital improvements. And even though for, I think, all these years, it was a 3% rate increase because of the economic downturn, and also whenever there's, for example, a relatively wet summer, water revenues drop. And so you can see, even though there's rate increases, it does not necessarily translate into revenue rate increases, and this is clearly shown here. Now, here's the, the short-term projection for the next four years if the rates are implemented as adopted already by the commission and the operating expenses. So you can see there's a little bit of opportunity there for about a half, about roughly average of about $700,000 a year that could be spent on capital improvements, between the difference between the revenue and the operating expenses. Now...
Before you go on, does that include, I'm assuming it includes the fees that we pay to South Fork?
Yes. Yes, right now, it's very roughly around $1.5 million of that operating expense goes directly to the South Fork for the treated water.
To purchase water.
Purchase water.
And how does, how is that split related to what we pay versus our water partner in West Lynn? Because we obviously are part owners of the, I'm not saying that I'm, I'm not having an issue with it, I'm just curious, is it, you know, 50/50, 60/40?
It's roughly 60/40.
It's, I honestly don't, haven't studied that piece of it yet, but that's the discussion we're going to have, because we, you'll see one of my recommendations later on is to break, right now, it's buried very, very, very deep in the budget, and in the future, we'd like to see it shown separately.
But for the record, from my time with South Fork, it's, it's based on usage, so out of a million gallons going through, out of their system into whose system, it's roughly 60/40 for, with Oregon City being 60.
60, that's, that's what I recall it was, I'm just trying to figure out if that was still the same ratio.
Also included in the expense side of the rep, of the charter I just showed you is the debt service that you are paying on the bonds that were sold back in, well, that were approved back in 1994, roughly $200,000 a year, and that those bonds be fully paid off in 2014, 15. And the charter, as it currently reads, says that once the bonds are paid, rates shall roll back to pre-bond issue levels. And then the $64 question is what that means, and I'll talk a little bit about that. Now, I looked at four different rate scenarios to, to bring to you and to the city commission. And the first one would be if the charter were changed, there's no rollback, and you were to continue what you've sort of been doing, which is an annual increase of 3%. The second scenario I looked at would be where there's a rollback in fiscal year 1516, and in computing that rollback, one word to assume that there was a 3% increase every year between 1994 and 1516, which is the maximum allowed by the charter. The third scenario is similar, except that the 3% increase is only shown for those years when the commission actually adopted a rate increase. And there were six fiscal years in that timeframe where there was no rate increase, and so consequently, for this particular scenario, the revenue would be less by about 20% because, in fact, that reflects the fact that there were six years of no rate increases. And then the final one is what I call a sustainable system, or scenario number three, and that is if you did not roll back the rates, actually increased rates for a couple of years, two, three years, and then went back to the 3% rate increase. And so I'm going to present those different scenarios. The first one is without a rollback, which would take a vote of the people, but continuing at the 3% per year increase and keeping expenses and staffing levels, you know, as fixed as possible, short of inflation. And as you can see, over time, by 10 years out, we will be generating about $1.5 million which would be available for capital improvements. And that includes all capital improvements that you would do, whether it be storage, distribution lines, et cetera.
So that includes the pipe replacement program?
That would include pipe replacement.
As well as the capital improvement program that's in the master plan. And then also, as many of you may know, we're trying to either save up or prepare for new facilities for public works, and so we also need money for that.
Whatever money is spent would come out of the differential between the total water revenue and the operating expense, and this does not get you to the level of replacement that you need to have, but it certainly found some of it. The second one, scenario 2A, is where you would roll back rates in 1516, but you'd roll, you'd have that, the rollback is, is not a severe in this case because it assumes a 3% increase every single year between 1994 and 1516. But even so, the, there's no room for capital expenditures, as you can see. In fact, the water fund would have to be cut significantly to be able to meet this particular rollback scenario. There would be no money available after 15, after 1415 for any capital expenditures under this scenario.
And I would like to just mention too here that the, these operating expenses are the tasks that our water team performs on a daily basis, based, you know, standard operations and maintenance. Many, we have many, many programs within the operating expenses that are required by EPA regulations that are, ensure that we have the right amount of chlorine in the water system, that clears out those fire hydrants periodically, so we don't get all the crud in the water line. the crud in the water lines. And Eli is working on a list, a description, so that we really understand, what does that mean when we start thinking about not being able to continue funding the operating costs of our system? So...
Can you go back to your last slide?
And that is partial preparation for understanding what the water rate rollback does for the water system.
The scenario two back where there's a rollback, but the rollback would not allow for increases in those years where the commission did not increase rates in the system. And as you can see here, there's about a million and a half, almost plus deficit, and no capacity for capital improvements whatsoever under this scenario. Now, this is even more significant than it seems because if you just block off, and I did this very crudely, but it gives you an idea, if you block off the amount of money you're sending to the South Fork for treated water, you can now see this is, this is the bar that you have room to work with. So you're, you know, you're talking about at least a third cut in the operating expenses of the water fund. So it would be draconian.
I don't really, maybe I just didn't listen hard enough, but I don't understand where you're talking about taking the rate increase. You said we have the six years where we didn't have the rate increase, and you're talking, and the suggestion is that we go back and recapture those six years and have, how do you get the money when the times are already...
Well, let me go through it. It is complicated, so let me reiterate both of them. Because what I've assumed is for a rollback, okay, and the charter's not particularly clear. I mean, it doesn't really give you any guidance what that means.
Right.
It says pre-bond levels, okay. So what we did is we went back and went back to 1994, before the big rate increase, and said, all right, here's the rates. And then for the first scenario, we increased those rates 3% every year as allowed by the charter on all the way out to 2015, 16.
So the baseline year was 1994?
Yes.
Yes.
And what, do you know what the average rate was at that time before?
I do in my spreadsheet, but I don't have it.
We can save that for next time.
Yeah, we can certainly.
We can get that to you, yeah.
I'm just curious, the comparison in the pre-bond rate to what it is now?
We'll get to that information.
I'll get it to you, yeah, because I had it.
So let me see if I can say what you said.
Yeah, okay.
I can understand it. So in 1994, that was when we passed the bond. So did we have a 3% rate increase in 1994? Did it start in 1995, or there wasn't one?
Actually, it was, in 94, it was a very large increase, and I don't remember the percent.
It was like 65%.
65% increase.
That's what caused the...
And then after that, for most years, it was a 3% increase, but there were six years where there was no rate increase.
And what years were those?
We have that information too. They were primarily in the...
Prior to 1994 or during...
Early 2000s.
No, after.
It was like late 90s, early 2000s.
Okay, after then. Okay, that's what I wasn't understanding was, was there no rate increase prior to 94? So it was after, but there were, so let's say it was 2000 to 2006, just for purposes of illustration. So the rate stayed flat and we didn't increase at 3%?
That's correct.
Okay.
And whether or not, I mean, it'll be a legal decision or opinion as to what we can, if we can assume a 3% increase over those, all of the years, or if we can only assume a 3% rate increase when the city commission formally adopted a resolution to increase the rates. And the, because the charter allows us a 3% increase, there is the potential opinion that when we're determining that rollback rate, you know, that we can include 3% over the 20 years. But we don't have a legal decision, a legal opinion on that yet. And then there's also the opinion that the city can decide what to do, and unless challenged, you know, the challenge is what would precipitate an appeal about what we're deciding to do. So it's pretty complicated. I'm sure you guys will hear a lot more about that in the next six to nine months, too.
I'm just trying to wrap my head, as you said, it is complicated. I'm trying to wrap my head around, so if we didn't have the increase, how is it that you can make the assumption that we would have it? How is that going to get, how do you, how do you collect for something that we didn't charge in the first place?
Well, and that's a...
Okay, that's one of the questions.
It'll be a legal opinion.
Okay.
And there's those two, two options, two potential alternatives.
Okay.
And we thought...
We should look at both of them.
We need to, this is information, we don't, I'm not suggesting I don't know what the right answer is.
No, no, I know you're not. I'm just trying to understand what the scenario is.
We want to give as much information as we can.
And the most draconian one, which is it rolls back to 94, period, is not even mapped out.
No, I think we could assume at least the 3% rate increase.
No, you can't. There are reactionary elements that will gladly pocket that $40, so...
Well, that's the, that's the $64 question. What is the rollback?
Yeah. Well, the other $64,000 question is, we can take a 3% rate increase, but there's nothing that says the city commission has to. So it's just available as an option. Nothing in here says that 3% is mandatory and has to occur. It's, we might like it to occur, but...
It just cannot exceed.
Right. It cannot exceed that.
Right.
Yeah.
And then the last scenario is no rollback. Obviously, we'd take a vote. A 3% annual increase through 14, 15, and then a 10% increase the following year, followed by two years of 5%, and then back to the 3%. Now, that, that scenario puts you in position long-term to meet your full pay-as-you-go sustainable system without any future borrowing to maintain your collection system. It gets, you can see in the out years, you got a little over, you got about $2.3 million differential available for capital improvements. And so you will be fully paid, all your debt will be paid, and you will be operating a sustainable system. Now, you know, from a rate-making type of person, a 10% and a 5% and a 5% is a big increase, but it is, it's not a 65% increase. And to be able to put your utility on a pay-as-you-go basis, in my view, is really the way you want to go. Because that means you will not be borrowing in the future to make improvements. So if you don't maintain the system, it's very likely you could go along probably 20 years. But then when the stuff really starts failing, then all of a sudden, you're going to have a backlog of improvements so large that the opportunity for pay-as-you-go financing will simply not be there anymore. You'll simply have to go back and get, to borrow money to bring the system back. When, when the level of service drops to the point that the people are upset with you, then it's too late to be on a sustainable pay-as-you-go basis.
Multiply that by the other utilities. I wish it was just as simple as this, that it was only one facility that we have, but we also have sewer, you know. And let's just say that they both have a similar type of an increase. You know, I don't have my calculator, but my head's kind of going, hmm, 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 you know.
Well, and that's, and I've given you one...
One.
Option to get there. You could get there more slowly. You don't have to do a 10%. You could do a 7% or you could do it all in one year. There's numerous options available to the city how they could get to pay-as-you-go. But in the long term, those utilities that operate on pay-as-you-go are the best, are the most efficient utilities because they don't pay interest costs.
Would it be true to say that all of the options that do not include a rollback would require city council action?
Would require a vote of the people.
Vote charter.
Charter amendment. Yes.
It'd be a charter amendment.
Yes.
Take away the rollback. There's going to be big trouble.
So, my recommendations or our recommendations are to, is for the city to begin the dialogue with the citizens, to explain the condition of the utility and the goals necessary to modify the charter. How you modify the charter, frankly, is optional because there are different things you could do. For example, one of the charter amendments that was adopted at that time is that any time you went to borrow money, you would have to go back for a vote. Well, no need, may not be any need to change that. So there's a number of things you could do in terms of how you modify the charter. But right now, what's important is that the city communicate with the residents so they understand what the implications are. I'm recommending financial plan scenario number three, how you get to a sustainable system, I think is quite flexible, but I think the long-term goal should be on a pay-as-you-go basis so you're not borrowing money in the future. And then finally, there's one other one, and I mentioned this earlier, and that is that the, that you break out the South Fork Water Board portion of the bill as a separate part of the bill, so that it's not so deeply buried inside of your budget, so you hardly know it's there. So that when the South Fork Water Board increases its rates, it shows as a rate increase for the South Fork Water Board, and it doesn't necessarily have to diminish the revenue available for the distribution system, because that's what's happening now.
Well, do you think people will understand? I mean, we are South Fork, so I mean, it's not like it's some separate thing. It's kind of like when people complain about the government. They complain about the government, but we are the government.
We are the government.
So we're complaining about ourselves.
Well, exactly. But remember, we don't own it all. We, and it is not, it is not governed by the city commission. It's governed by a board on which the city commission has participation.
Right.
So I think it's adequately different. There's a good example. I serve on the board in Eugene, Springfield for wastewater. And we adopt rates for treatment. And those rates show up on my bill as MWMC treatment. And then the city of Eugene has its separate line item for collection, and the city of Springfield has its, and its bills has its separate line item for collection. But when the commission raises rates, which we had to because of new requirements, it shows up a line item on the bill. And I think it's important that people understand where their money goes, what constitutes the bill.
Have you guys factored any kind of time and money in for public outreach? Open House or...
There needs to be a public outreach program. Absolutely, yes.
We haven't budgeted yet for that, Commissioner.
Yeah, I would think that would be something you'd want to do.
Well, it's got to be, it's got to be messaged correctly and...
Yeah.
I think what really brought the third recommendation to our attention was, this last year, we had an 8% South Fork rate increase. And while it was much less than it would have been if we hadn't figured out a way to lend them some money, that came straight out of the water fund. We paid that 8%, we're just paying 8% more for water now. And that impacts the money I have to spend on other things, operations and capital. And I can't recoup that from the rate payers. I mean, my desire would be to be able to pass on that rate increase so that the services we provide aren't diminished or potentially diminished by having less, by having to pay more for the South Fork water and having less for our operations and capital. So that's what really brought that to our attention. Because, you know, South Fork's been really great, not too bad at rate increases. But when I'm limited a 3% rate increase and they do an 8%, you know, it's like, ooh. And what if they had to do a really big one? And I, you know, what happens if it starts chipping away? And that's what we're trying to just separate out, the two different services, and pay for them separately. Does that make sense?
Sort of.
Yeah, it makes sense to us in some way, but yeah, it's going to be a tough message to get to folks that are expecting a rollback in their water mills.
I don't know if they remember that. There's, I mean, there's some people with long memories around here, but not every, you know.
They die it off.
They die it off. But, so I guess, one of the things I wrote in the margin, and again, as I said, I'll write all my questions out and get them to you. So all of this demand and everything that's going on and the need to replace things, where is the scenario that factors in some fairly rigorous water conservation measures? Because I kind of would like to see that.
Sustainability.
I mean, we just can't keep going on, just, you know, turning the tap on whenever we, you know, darn well please. And we've been told that, you know, some of us can do our laundry late at night so we don't fall asleep, but trying to do our watering and things off-peak. So where does that factor in? Where is a recommendation about, we can do these things that will maybe not keep the wolf at the door, away from the door, but it could diminish some of the impact? Because I think we're at a point in our, in our community and, you know, systems, we just can't keep a sustainable rate of going up and up and up and using everything everybody wants. I mean, I remember the, every other watering day, you know, and you can water this day and you can do that day. And, you know, in a lot of ways, I think we should have stuck with some of that.
I'm going to ask Eli, have you got a specific water conservation program?
Not presently.
Well, South Fork does.
South Fork provides.
South Fork does that.
Either regional water providers consortium.
Right. And, I mean, are you going to answer the question?
There may not be an answer. I'm just saying...
No, I have answered.
I'm just giving it to you from a utility perspective.
It may be that we need to have a scenario like that, because I think a lot more people are conscious about it these days.
We, you know, people have adopted water conservation programs in Oregon. And in Oregon, you know, in the wintertime, it's a non-issue because we're using about a third of the water that we use in the summertime. But it is an issue, especially if we're looking at, let's say, expanding the treatment capacity of the, of the water treatment plant.
Well, I'm looking at global warming.
Exactly.
I mean, I think that that's a factor.
Yeah. The, from the water distribution side, in terms of the programs that we have to fund, we have leak detection, that's the biggest water conservation measure. And your system is reasonably good, your memory serves you around 12%, which is, you know...
It's better than it was.
Better than it was, yes. I've lived in communities where it was 60% of the water was lost, but...
Yikes.
But, and if you don't upgrade the lines, that's where you will get eventually. You have hydrant maintenance and flushing programs. You have valve maintenance programs. You have water quality programs and water quality testing throughout the system. You have the valve maintenance. You have the meter repair and meter replacement and calibration program. The list goes on. And all of those things are simply staff time, independent of how much water is used. In fact, to keep the rates down, it's better for us if more water is used, because that's where the revenue comes from.
The revenue.
But how sustainable is that over time? I mean, I don't, I guess, my gut is it probably isn't.
I'd like to make one other point about that.
Sure.
And that is that many of the expenses which you've just mentioned are the operating expenses.
Sure, sure.
There's also the capital improvement program.
Sure.
The pipes are going to be 75 years lasting regardless if we use a little more water or a little less water. And the, because I, I mean, I'm with you, Denise. I'm very much wanting to use less of our resources and use them more wisely. And if we have fewer revenues, if we, if everybody cut their water consumption by 20%, we'd have 20% less revenue. And so if we're needing to keep up with the capital improvement program and the operating expenses, you'd probably have to charge a higher rate. And you do, you've probably also heard about tiered rates. And the more you use, the more you pay, and that kind of a thing. So those are all very good topics. And in terms of global or climate change...
Right.
That's something I agree also. We need to actively be planning for that. And the staff level, we are participating in various different programs. One is the Willamette Valley something or other, to join among other Willamette Valley communities to start preparing together for what if. And I think that's kind of a long...
Longer term.
Yes. Right.
You know, one of the things that, after hearing the presentation, I have a better appreciation of the whole system. And I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm all in favor of conservation of resources, and I think water conservation is a great idea. But it sounds to me like the fire flows and the distribution system have nothing to do with conservation.
No, they don't.
The size of the piping is going to be the same no matter what.
That's a very good point, Jerry.
And the only thing that would be affected was potentially the size of the reservoir. So everything else is going to be a cost, whatever that... So everything else is going to be a cost, whatever that pipe costs, if it's an eight-inch pipe or 12-inch pipe. It doesn't matter if 1,000 gallons or 10,000 gallons flow through that pipe. The pipe still costs the same.
I totally, I totally understand that.
So if the pipe only lasts 75 years, it's going to have to be replaced every 75 years, even if not a single drop of water flows through that pipe. So conservation is a great idea, but I don't think it has a huge impact on these costs that we're talking about.
It does. Conservation would make sure we have more water in the Clackamas River in the summer when we need it for the salmon. There's, those benefits are--
Yeah, there's trade-offs, yeah.
Very valuable. But relating that to the actual distribution system is, it's different. But it's a great, I think it's a really great thing to talk about. It's interesting.
I mean, I don't know who brought it up, but you know, it's, you know, if you use a lot, you should pay more, and if you don't use as much, you shouldn't pay as much. I mean, I know that's very simplistic, but--
And the City Commission, at some point, when, and the City Commission can look at rates how they wish. And we may hear that from them when we're doing, doing all this studying for the rollback. But that's something that they can consider, is looking at tiered rates as they look at their, as they look at even the rollback scenarios. And what do they want to present to the folks for the charter amendment? And, you know, how complicated do you make that charter amendment? And, you know, to the point where people don't understand, and then they vote no.
Well, and then they vote no, because they don't get it.
Right. So, but those are very, very important, very interesting topics that I think should be discussed in this community.
And part of staff's findings with respect to the master plan and forwarding along to the City Commission will be to what extent have conservation goals or sustainability goals been addressed by the water master plan.
Isn't that one of their, yep, number one.
Well, it's sort of interwoven throughout various goals in the comp plan.
In the comp plan.
So we'll need to do that as well.
I'm assuming that the commission, this planning commission has already reviewed the, I don't know, is there a stormwater master plan and a sewer master plan? I'm assuming there are.
We have a very, very old stormwater master plan. And as we comply with our new stormwater permit, we're going to be--
Updating.
Updating portions of the system, sort of drainage basin, looking at different drainage basins, looking at improvements we need to make to be compliant with our permit. The sanitary sewer master plan is, we've just started, we budgeted this year to do some flow mon, weather flow monitoring, so we can get good data for when we do that plan, do the modeling. And starting about next spring, next summer, after we've gathered some background data, we'll be starting the sewer master plan update. And that is a 10-year, well, it's a little, it's like, we're at year eight, but it's time to update it based on the stuff that we've gotten done, and we need to update all that information.
What's a little hard is, while I'm not honing in totally on the water master plan, I'm trying to get the bigger picture and what the implications are, because it's, again, as I said earlier, it's not the only utility we have. So you've got--
Right.
You've got all these, you've got these parts that all have to be in compliance with the comp plan, but they in and of themselves have impacts one to the other. And I know we can't do them all at the same time, but I'm trying to figure out what the common thread is, because I know the big thread will be, for all of them, will be the financing picture.
Right.
And that's something that the City Commission is going to have to deal with and struggle with.
Right. And the City Commission's interested in looking carefully at, how can we be more aggressive with our pipe replacements in the sanitary sewer system, in our collection system, because they want to feel more confident that the risks in our system are lower, and therefore perhaps we would have fewer overflows and backups and those kinds of things. We have an old system, and we've got a lot of topography, and the city is killing us.
We are way ahead of Portland, though. I can tell you that.
So these are things we live with every day.
Pete, I had a question for you.
Yes.
As a planning commission, what is our role with regard to the master plan update in view of the cost scenarios? Do we, do we have an involvement in the cost scenarios?
The way I would think that that would work is, you're making a generalized recommendation about the various scenarios that the applicant has put forward, and feel that those scenarios, as presented, provide an adequate range of choices for the City Commission to make, determining how to fund the build-out of the master plan. But I, it's really, you're not going to make a formal recommendation on which scenario to go with.
So we're looking at the range of scenarios that have been presented.
What do you think, Carrie?
I think that the planning commission's role needs to relate to the comprehensive plan generally, and the policies in the comprehensive plan, and the statewide planning goals that talk about providing utilities based on a 20-year horizon, that potentially talk about sustainability, that talk about the values set out in the comprehensive plan. Because at the end of the day, Pete is going to make a staff report based on consistency and compliance with the comprehensive plan and the statewide planning goals.
Yeah, so--
So to the extent that the funding of a system is a component of providing adequate utilities, I think it is part of your recommendation.
And looking back at concept plans that we've done, they all include a section on financing with a range of choices, whether it's, look at your SDC structure, look at reimbursement districts, look at your rate structure. All of those things go forward with the plan. But staff's findings and planning commission's recommendations will be based on how that plan meets your goals in the comp plan.
Thank you.
It's not a simple answer.
No, it isn't.
That is for sure.
Do we have any other comments related to the, to this issue?
We have some members of the public here that are ready to speak on this issue, I believe.
Okay.
Have we read our preamble? Do we need--
Nope.
We don't need it.
We don't need it, because this is a legislative hearing, so the clause of judicial proceeding, hearing procedures don't apply.
All right.
Neither do the conflict of interest, ex parte contact elements either. So we're just, this is a legislative proceeding--
Okay.
Where we're taking testimony on the record. We will continue to do so until the planning commission's ready to make a decision.
Thanks.
I will state for the record that I do use Oregon City water in the water system.
Okay, now you say that you don't use the water.
I'm not going to, I'm just going to whisper that. Our little secret.
So if we have people who are here to comment, could I have you just fill out one of these at the end? Oh, you can fill it out at the end, Paul, if you want.
That's why the lawn is brown.
Well, we have a brown lawn, too.
So we have Bob George here from Clackamas River Water.
We have a sad lawn.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
I'm Bob George, Clackamas River Water District Engineer. Mr. Moore was not able to make the meeting tonight, but he did have a letter, I believe, probably in your packet.
Yes, thank you.
So I'll just kind of summarize more than anything, because they speak for themselves pretty much. We had three areas of concern of the master plan, and one was transmission mains. The drawings appear to show usage of existing water mains that CRW presently own. And number two, it was, let me see here. Oh, in the planning, urban and rural reserve areas seem to be different than the urban growth boundary. I would have thought that the city, being involved in the core four group, determined where these urban reserve areas were, would might have started planning for those areas. And they don't seem to overlap, or they don't appear on your master plan. So it really will come down in the future, where will annexation occur within the existing, excuse me, growth will occur inside the UGB, or will there be other areas brought into the city?
UGB.
How, no, UGB outside UGB currently, such as the Henry C. Road area south of there. It's in the rural reserve areas. So will they be brought into Oregon City in the future? How that affects us is how we plan for serving the water in those areas. So I'm really interested as a district engineer, where the city serves, and where we'll draw those boundaries for, hopefully, many years, as you heard, 75 years' worth of pipe life at least. We like to have some certainty. That's what we're after in those type of areas. And the financial portion, any place that Oregon City and CRW could serve areas or use common facilities would be in our best interest, both the government agencies, storage, pumping, transmission. We're open to all those opportunities. Basically, we surround, or you surround us, however you want to look at it, all the way from the south, all the way around the east, Holcomb, Redland, Highway 213. So there are some opportunities there, I believe, possibly in storage. The critical infrastructures, a couple of them I'm concerned about, that show on the map, I believe it was E2, ES2 at one time, Country Village, 12-inch water line, and there's a 14-inch on Redland Road. Both are transmission mains that serve our customers, CRW customers, that appear to be shown as future Oregon City lines. I think we need to talk about those. Those are critical infrastructure for us to serve. It is not just a part of a loop or a single line. It is part of critical infrastructure, especially the 12-inch to Country Village. We have a pump station, 16-inch main, the 12, that basically serves our whole south side. So what I'm asking for may be a sit-down, some discussions between our engineers, and have some, a little more in-depth discussion, because at this time, that has not happened. So that's where I'm at, basically asking for some sit-down time with the city and discuss some of these issues.
Thank you very much.
Did you get our response to your three--
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I've gotten back to you, so that's fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we make an assumption for the members of the public who may not have any idea what Clackamas River water is, and get the five-minute Cliff Notes version?
Sure.
Sounds good.
We're basically a special water district. A combination of smaller districts of Redland, Holcomb, Claremont District, back in, boy, you're going to pull some memory here.
The 70s.
Claremont was in '64, '62, '63, somewhere in there. Holcomb, Redland, about the same time, the citizens came together and developed the special districts for water service in those areas. Since that time, we have merged with the Clackamas, used to be the Clackamas Water District, that serves all of unincorporated area north of Clackamas River from a water treatment plant. It's a 30-MGD plant.
Your water treatment plant?
Yeah. That's on the north side of the river.
Okay.
And currently, on the south side, we buy water from South Fork, similar to yourselves. And we also have a 1-MGD well on Redland Road. So total, total, we're probably at 60, 63,000 people that we serve, around 12,000 customers. Same type of mix. We probably have some more industrial than you, yourselves. But still, it's a fairly large area that we serve. I don't remember how many links of pipe and all that, but it's in our master plans, similar to yourselves. On the south side, I'm trying to remember if it's around five, let's see here. Trying to think of the split. I think it's like a third and two-thirds in customer base, north to south, and south being the smaller area. So basically, we serve the unincorporated areas outside the city limits, generally speaking. We have a few mixed areas, of course, joint users. We have the south end agreement, that we have some mixed use. And then we have the HOP area.
Not sure where the--
Park Place, HOP area off of Holcomb, the Barrow Crest.
Oh, okay.
Area Park Place that occurred, I believe, in around 2,000, those agreements. So we have been planning over the years, but on this update, there appears to be a couple that I'd like to address as a, how can we make it work?
So do you abut any other jurisdictions, like Milwaukee, or, I mean, I've not seen your map, so I'm assuming you do.
We, on the north side, we have Gladstone, Oplod Water District, Milwaukee, Happy Valley, Sunrise Water Authority, which is a special district. And the south side, we're just Oregon City here, you know, where we abut. So yes, we have annexations, issues with Milwaukee, not so much with Gladstone, you know, they've kind of got their boundaries kind of fixed. But Milwaukee is doing some growth out in the north. That would be there in northeast area, our northwest area. And Happy Valley's been doing some annexation and expansion also.
Are you seeing much, I mean, in the unincorporated area, there aren't a lot of lots, you know, vacant parcels out there, so there might be a little infill, at least in the close area closer to us. But I'm assuming that, you know, as areas annex, your area of influence is shrinking somewhat. I mean, slowly, slowly. I mean, it's, we're not having any growth spurts in the near future, I don't think, but, so it's compressing somewhat.
There's areas that you are now annexed. Beaver Creek Road, we've served all those areas in the past. In the future, of course--
We don't know.
--we won't be doing that. We understand that. That's the progress of how cities and special districts work.
Works.
My point means really is, has to do with transmission, storage, and source. And because it is critical facilities, we're able to keep those. But it appears that the city might be claiming those, or thinking that that might be part of your facilities in the future. And if it's not, it will affect your costs and your planning. And I just want to make sure it's out on the table, so we have those discussions of a nice, clean picture, especially on the transmission, because as we all know, those are expensive.
Where's the Claremont area? Because I know where the Claremont area is in Oregon City, but is there another area--
Just heading south.
Go south, Highway 213, Beaver Creek Road, south.
Okay.
Okay, just as soon as you leave the city limits, you're in our district.
And that's called Claremont?
Well, that's the old Claremont Water District. It is now Clackamas River Water.
Okay.
But the Claremont District used to go all the way over to South End Road, all the way, Pease Road, College, Beaver Creek Road--
Okay.
Maple Lane, I mean, it was by the larger--
We have a Claremont, we had a Claremont Mobile Home Park, and then--
Yes, we used to serve it.
Where Stein's Station is, that area was called Claremont.
Claremont, that is correct.
Yeah, because that was where Fred Myers's was, the old Claremont Dairy.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Paul Edgar here to speak.
Ooh, stealing your maps, Ken.
Our water, yeah. Thank you. My name's Paul Edgar. I'm the land use chair of the Kanema Neighborhood Association. And as you might see, I've got a map here of Kanema. And part of the reason why I came here tonight is to, as I looked at some of the maps and the future planning, I kept on seeing, in the draft, maps of pump stations and changes and things that might happen that directly are in Kanema. And a lot of the, what I saw that was happening in Kanema, just to kind of give you guys a little show and tell, is Kanema's a very tight little area. And right now, we have a water pipe, a main that comes over the bluff and comes down right on top of what would be Fifth Avenue and, oh, let me, and Miller, right in here. And so it's up, it's actually up here in this hill up in here. And what we have, though, is, we don't have a lot of spaces where people can go. Recently, the city just bought this big chunk of land right here and dedicated it into a park. It's a huge chunk of land. So we're not going to have housing development there. Metro has gone along here and bought up all of this land right in here, and we're not going to have any housing or anything going into there.
That's Kanema Bluff.
Into the Kanema Bluff. They now have a total of 272 acres that they bought all along below kind of the ridge that they've been able to aggregate together. But when we get into-- But when we get into what they've got and we get into what your maps are, I see a lot of planned infrastructure that really doesn't feed any houses, any future development. The only thing that I can see is fire, bringing in adequate water pipes. And where we've had multiple fires on the Kanema Bluff next to the Kanema Children's Park over the years, whenever they've turned the fire hydrants on and off, slamming them on and off, houses in lower Third Avenue all flood. It blows out all of their pressure relief valves virtually everywhere. And this happens on a regular basis, and it creates, in fact, right now, they've been redoing the Kanema Children's Park, and they've been turning the fire hydrant on and off, and they blew out the house, all of the water pipes in the house directly across the street from the Kanema Children's Park, if you're not aware of it. It was right in Mark's house, who's the chair of the Kanema Historic Cemetery. Anyway, we have, we have, it's an old, old neighborhood. And part of this thing, one of the plans shows a pipe coming off of a water main that's right, there's a meter at the back of John Spence's property, you know, the big meadow, clear at the back, and they show a pipe going right around here, all the way over to kind of Fifth and Center Street, and going through that area. Well, that's right along a slide zone in a bluff, in an area where no one with any common sense would ever put a pipe, but that's the way the map shows. If I was going to put a pipe, I would put it along Fifth Avenue in a street where I don't have to put myself into a, into, the Ducommis map show this whole area bright orange, purple for a slide potential. You don't build, you don't put a pipe in a slide in that. You don't do any construction in there that you don't have to. So the, but when I started looking at all of this thing, all of a sudden, I come to the conclusion, I'm saying, wow, we've got to be really cognizant of where we are putting all of these pipes, and are we putting them where they should be in the most intelligent plan? And if this is part of long-term master planning, are we specking out 12-inch pipes when we don't need 12-inch pipes? Or we, or bigger pipes? What are we specking out? We show a pipe, a future pipe going all the way down from Kanema, all the way down to this urban area that's in an urban growth boundary, down on the other side of the Kanema Bluff. It's not that I don't want to see something happen there, because that area should be annexed into the city, because we need industrial land to swap out for what we may have to find industrial place, to put industrial land from the mill site. So that's an ideal place to look to the future for finding someplace that we can annex into the city, because it has that ability to get that one-for-one relationship that Metro wants us to find, when we get into swapping out zoning areas. But the biggest problem that I have in here is, when I went through all of this mapping, I started seeing, within the growth boundary, a lot of what I'll call overly robust expectations. Right now, we have people that are turning down votes at the ballot box on all annexations, and this is an example, we have to realize that people are becoming very concerned. Now, just as a point of record, I'm 71 years old, and I do think about senior citizens and aging in place. And if we start talking about allowing our rates and everything to go up and up and up, and it's water rates, sewer rates, road maintenance rates, stormwater rates, park, we could get into everything, and then, then they throw on the big kicker, the current plan coming out of Congress approved, is that Medicare will go up doubling to, close to $250 for basic Medicare in 2014. So when we get into this stuff and we start tacking rate after rate after rate increase, pretty soon, we tax and feed people who shouldn't be taxed out or feed out of their homes, out of their homes. So we have to be very cognizant. Right now, we have maybe 50 million people that fall into that category in the United States. We have a higher per capita segment of seniors trying to age in place in Oregon City, as any city in Clackamas County. We're right at the top of the list. So when we get into these things, we have to be damn smart, smarter than maybe someplace else that is living on, like Happy Valley. So I got into all of these projections and revenue funds, and then one of the things that kind of came up to me, I see where we're pulling out a lot of money for the building fund, for building a new Public Works Fund. This type of money coming out of water revenue actually has a, eliminates the buffer, creates greater contingency. And maybe the funding of the buildings that we need or want, need to look at some other vehicle. But we're taking money from an area, and this destabilizes the, our, all of our choices that we have. I hope that you got my email, but I've, that I sent in, but.
We have it, Paul.
I, I understand encumbered accounting. I was trained in it. I understand fund accounting. I was trained in it. We have to be smart with all of our funds. I'm not against, and I went before the city on SDC funds and recommended that we have robust SDC funds. We've got to let the new users, the new impacts pay for themselves as they come along. I just think that you shouldn't have to roll that back on everyone. I think what the city has done has been very good. Maybe we can do better, but I would like to think that in the future, we can look at some special funding districts where new, where growth is funded by those districts themselves. Clackamas County had to look at that when they were trying to put in some new roads, and they, like 172nd cutting across from Sunnyside Road to 12th. They didn't, they couldn't use urban renewal funds, and they went into a special taxing district. And they, they used that and created that ability so that they, they localized the cost to those people that were being directly affected. And I think we should be looking more at trying to do some of these things so that we can come up with plans that, that put the real cost back onto those who create the new and actuarial needs that we're trying to address. You know, I could talk for a long time, but I guess the biggest thing is, is that I've studied it, sometime if there's ever a work session where we can sit down and I could be an active player into it, I've been, I look at it, I look at the detail, and I would hope to be creative with you, because it's not going to be simple.
So, Paul, I take it then you support scenario three for funding?
The, the area of funding with the rollback, the, first of all, we have to find out what the impact of that rollback is going to be. But I, I understand the appreciation in my mind that, that we could potentially, because the charter says we can go 3% out from the time of the, of the 1994 figure out till, to where we have the payoff in 2014, 2015 of the bonds, that we should be able to take an actuarially and calculate out what the rate would be. We're not, it will be less by doing that than what they're probably paying right now.
Right. But the scenario three is, was proposed irrespective of the rollback, was created a self-sustaining where people pay what they owe. And so therefore, you're paying for your own line maintenance, you're paying for your own water transmission, you're paying for your own pump station.
These, these got to be, you know, pay now or pay later. I, you know, it's like road maintenance. I did not like road maintenance fee, but I voted for it. It was like, pay now or pay later. You have to do it. I just realized that, that when we look at the bills, and the bills keep on coming in each year, calculated up higher and higher, then all of a sudden, the, that, the short-term memory doesn't correspond with the long-term memory about what really was the cause and what you were doing. And I guess, in this case, we just need to pay, we've got to pay for the maintenance we have to have, what Nancy needs and what Eli needs to maintain our pipes. We've got to, we've got to figure out what that is. And I just don't want to see money taken from the water revenue area redirected any place else. I want money that goes into water revenue to stay within the water revenue fund area. And if we need to have a building fund, that's a building fund from something else. But don't start mixing them.
But what would the something else be?
Well, that's going out, that's going out to the voters and asking them to say, okay, here is the, the buildings that we want to build for Public Works, but, and letting them approve those, that bonding and putting it on long-term bonding. But, but this piecemeal taking of what, five, $700,000 a year, collectively, on an annualized basis, pulling it out of this revenue area and transferring it into, into a building fund, to me, is disingenuous to what we are facing. We have contingencies we haven't even been able to identify as to what's going to happen if we do have a rollback. And, and this is kind of like money that we should have in the bank, that we should be pulling and holding and hoarding, so that if we do have a problem, we, we've got, we've got some type of cushion. And we should be doing the most proactive type of systems maintenance that we can to say, what can we do now that will cost us less within, let's say, the five-year window? So if we're doing things, we're always looking out in advance and being as smart as we can in preventive maintenance. But at the same time, we've got to be looking at, we don't know what the courts are going to do, what our attorneys are going to do, and we're taking, we're, in effect, stripping money out. And I don't think that that's right. I, I think that we should be collecting that, holding that, and making sure that we're in, we're addressing the needs of all contingencies in a, in a most intelligent manner we can.
But isn't the building fund a contingency fund?
It is. The, the building fund is a, is a fund that, that should.
It's non, it's non-encumbered money, which means it can be redirected to fill in at some other point, should that be the better choice than build a building. But it sounds to me like you're, you're okay with people buying houses with no down payment, which is the other end.
No, I just want, I just want, if you want, if it's a building fund, I want it to go out and be presented as a building fund. Just go out there and, and sell the, sell the voters on it, not take money. It's like taking cards off the bottom of the deck. And it's not, so many of the people don't understand this. I just would feel more comfortable that if you're going to face somebody, let's look them in the eye and say, okay, we need a new police station. Do you agree? Yes. How are we going to fund it? Do we need a new library? Yes. How are we going to fund it? Do we need a Public Works building? Wow, what comes first? Police station? Library? Public Works? And then all of a sudden, I look at it and I say, do we want to tax and fee seniors and people right out of their houses? Because the basic dignity of a senior citizen is destroyed when we turn around and they can't afford to live out their life, age in place. And that, and when you start destroying that basic dignity of a senior by not allowing them to age in place or pulling away their dignity because they can't afford to live, and then you top it, top it all off with this doubling of Medicare. It's going to, I know so many seniors out there that total social security is $1,000 to $1,200 a month. Medicare is going to be $250 a month in 2014. It, right now, it's been at 105. And so this type of increase that we're looking at, when you, then you say, okay, I'm going to start tacking on water rate increases, sewer rate, all of these rates and rates and rates, and electric and everything else. And then all of, we break the backs of people, human beings, your parents and grandparents.
Or us.
And people like myself, fortunately, I've done okay in my life, but I'm still conservative. And I have to worry about a lot of other people, because there are a lot of people out there that don't have the ability to speak or understand what I see. And so this becomes a really relevant factor. So I would just like to have the opportunity to be a player at the table, honestly representing the citizenry and believing that, I believe very strongly that we should go out within all of the neighborhoods, basically goal one, analyzing all of our future growth and projections and understandings within the neighborhood associations, and, and getting them on board, letting them see what it is. What do they see and what do they think, and how should it affect them? And from that, it will help us pull together a, a good plan. And I just want to be part of trying to be responsible.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none. Does the applicant wish to respond to any of the comments that have been made?
Well, I think I would like to mention that the system development charges will be reviewed after this water master plan is adopted, and they'll be recalculated depending on what the needs are, like for, there's some future reservoirs in the plan, and those are not currently in our current water SDC. So for growth, we will be reevaluating those system development charges. Now, once we have our, our whole capital improvement program that's adopted, so that we can use something that's been vetted and approved, et cetera, then, let's see, regarding the Kanema pipes, I thought maybe I'd ask Walt to address, that's an area where we have some fire flow problems and some pressure problems, same thing. And I believe that some of those pipes were put in, A, because it's vacant land, and should we want to have a water system or water services there in the future, that's the kind of pipe system or the size that we'd be looking at. And we're not saying it is going to go there. It depends on whether, if, how that land were to develop. And even if it's a park, they may want some firefighting ability and, or for irrigation, again, I don't know. But then also, some of the circulation, I think, was to improve the fire flow. So do you want to address the Kanema pipes at all, Walt, or?
Well, I.
You need to use the microphone.
And Walt, after Walt speaks, I can briefly address the charter issue to, in a little more detail.
I will be brief. The, the size is shown there are clearly sized for fire flow for that region. If, if it develops, then that's the size you need. If it never develops, you won't need them. All that piping is in the SDC portion of the fund, it's not part of the CIP at this time. So if, in the future, there's development there, that's the size of pipe you would need to meet the fire flows of that land use. If it never develops, it won't ever get built, it's not in the CIP.
Right. And I guess I, since it's a park, it's kind of special, because parks are hard to develop in. But even if, and I know it's probably, a lot of that's going to be natural park, so we may never develop. That's fine. But if it was to develop, in order for us to require for them to put a water system in, and this is for the city attorney, I understand we have to have something in an adopted plan that backs up our requirement for them to put in a certain-sized pipe, et cetera. So is that correct?
That's correct. We would have to change the conference of plan.
The.
And in court, and then the other issue is on the slide area. If a pipe ever needed to. needed to go in that location, um, we would do a complete alignment alternatives analysis, in which case all of the geotechnical and geologic hazards would be considered. We have a few pipes that go through steep slopes. We don't like them. But when, where we had to have them, there are, there are methods of constructing them that make them, um, more able to withstand differential movement, um, should there be, um, settlement, movement of the soils. And, um, so that, that's one of those point A to point B pipes. We certainly would not want to put it in a slide area. And, um, if it ever is needed, that would be looked at in great detail. We prefer not, we like to stay away from those, um, geologic hazard areas as much as we can.
And, uh, in addition to the geologic hazard areas, you've also got natural resource overlay district requirements for utilities that cross, uh, streams and those kinds of things that require additional purview and discretionary review by the planning commission. What I was gonna go back to on-
What about wildlife corridors? That's become under the natural-
If it fall, if a wildlife corridor falls within our natural resource overlay district, um, as an upland corridor, then we can regulate it. We, we have not adopted a lot of, you know, upland wildlife corridors, so our wildlife corridors tend to be our stream buffer areas.
Because I, I am familiar with the fact that there are some deer corridors that run through Kanema.
Right. Yeah, certainly. And there's also a lot of wetlands that are, there are too. The city charter with respect to parks has designated parks and natural parks that require vote of the people. If it's, if there's gonna be any kind of development or any change to that, that would, that would not be a park purpose. Um, but that's more properly defined when the alignment of these particular facilities is known. Um, and it could be a charter amendment issue that comes up when that planning occurs, but, um, uh, I think we need to address that when we make our findings. Um, I don't believe that the passage of this water master plan is gonna require a charter amendment because it's so big-picture and conceptual, but.
Uh, I had a question. Uh, one of Mr. Edgar's concerns, and I wasn't sure who the best person to respond to that would be. Uh, my understanding when Walt went through the different funding scenarios was that the, the, the money that we were discussing in those scenarios was earmarked specifically toward the, uh, water system. Is, is that not the case?
That is the case.
So everything related to the rollback and the, the fee increases, those would be strictly restricted to water maintenance or CIP or whatever.
That's correct.
And not be available for other capital improvement projects.
That's right. The water utility is its own, um, is its own-
Enterprise fund.
Enterprise fund, yes. Thank you very much.
So it's a discrete fund that can't be robbed from-
Well, some cities can use, some, you could use your utility funds for other things. The city has not done that in the past.
They could use it if they build the new public, if they build a new water-
Yeah, well, for the public works facility.
Water works facility could be used for that.
Because that's a capital improvement of a water facility.
But, but it's, it's intended for use in water-related-
Yes.
-facilities.
Yeah, it doesn't pay for the entire building. The, the stormwater would pay some-
Eight hundred and fifty thousand in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen.
You need to go up to the mic.
And eight hundred and fifty-
Paul, mic.
And those are, those are based on budgets that we had created, and there's, that's such a complicated issue with the public works facilities at this time. Because if we, um, what, if we need to build a whole new facility, we'll have to borrow money, go to the vote of the people. And in order to do that, we have to have this water rate thing figured out because no bond company, no bank is gonna lend us money if we have no certainty in our water rates. So it's really complicated at this point. And so, we took what was previously budgeted. In a, kind of, we had a, we had a long-range plan for building public works.
Well, the, and out of this, again, Paul Edgar from Kanema, uh, in the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, it shows under transfer from the revenue area from water. It shows a transfer of eight hundred and fifty thousand in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, and eight hundred and fifty thousand in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and five hundred thousand in two thousand, uh, in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. And then with the rollback, it goes to zero. Uh, but, but it show, but if you were to look at the cumulative amounts that have been transferred in the preceding years, what we, what we're getting at, uh, these are monies that are, that have been transferred out of, uh, out of the water fund, revenue fund. And, uh, they, when we're in a contingency period, if I was doing contingency management, uh, I would be trying to look very intelligently at my contingency funds and trying to identify whether or not the, I have adequate set-asides for all of my contingencies. I think we've been stealing from Peter to pay Paul in this carry, not me, but, you know.
And I, my, uh, my reply to that is, public works needs new facilities, and so we also, we have to plan for that expense in our future as well. So that's why we've been strategically setting aside money and, um, working through the planning process for what those facilities will look like, where they're going to be, et cetera. That would be my only response. I think it's important to plan for all of these things.
Well, it's, there's two elements to that. One, it's the down payment on the facility. And everybody puts money out of their savings for a down payment on a house or whatever, or a car or whatever. Um, but when the time comes to take care of whatever emergency, they grab their car money or their down payment money, and they, they fix the emergency. Um, so it is still a contingency fund that is unencumbered and can be accessed by the city council. If they choose to do that to alleviate the expenses of seniors or juniors or first-time home buyers or, uh, bedridden home care, you know, disabled veterans. I mean, that's all within the city's purview because the money is not yet encumbered. If we get the go-ahead for a facility, um, and we use that money as the down payment, the surety on the bond, then it becomes encumbered. But that won't happen until there's a vote of the people and the, the locations identified, the buildings identified. And that might not be for five years. It might be March.
No, we have to figure out the water-
I understand. I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, it's, it's a variable timeframe.
I think you portrayed it.
It's, it's, it's just important that we realize that we do have contingencies out there that, that have to be, uh, both in a building fund and in a water fund and in, uh, what people can afford to pay, you know, and what breaks the back.
Thank you.
And just for the record, though, in, in the building fund itself, um, the finance director's tracking the, uh, transfers from each of the utilities annually, so we know exactly how much is from each water sewer storm. Um, and so that if, if we need to go back, whatever, there's a true record of it, and there's no-
Mingling.
Mingling, there's no switchy-switchy, you know, all those possible things that we wouldn't do.
Thank you. Pete, are, are we taking any action on this this evening?
No, all we're looking for is a recommendation to continue till the twenty-fourth.
I would so move.
Well, I still have questions, so. I do understand that, that it's worth continuing. But this master plan does not include any of the concept plan areas, correct? Not South End, uh, Beaver Creek, Park Place?
It does include all three.
Uh, it doesn't look like it on the map, as I see it. Because the map stops the urban growth boundary, and the concept plans extend well beyond the urban growth boundary in some areas.
Oh, I, I think you're talking about the urban reserves and areas or not, not the-
Well, you said urban growth boundary, and that's the purple line on the map. That's different than the urban reserve boundary.
Right. Well, we're talking about concept plans-
Concept plans are within the UGB. So the, this includes Park Place, includes Beaver Creek Road, and parts of South End within the UGB, but it does not address-
Then why did the golf course, which is in the urban, not in the urban growth boundary, therefore requiring an annexation vote, which failed, be included in the concept plan? So tell me how that works.
Golf course was within the urban growth-
No, it isn't. It is exactly on the edge of the urban growth boundary, which is why they tried to annex and failed. The same-
It's outside the city.
It's inside the UGB, but outside the city.
Outside the city limit.
I didn't think they were inside the UGB.
The Beaver Creek concept plan covered it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
I didn't think they were inside the UGB.
No, they are. In fact, the metro, the metro requirement is before you annex any
land within your urban growth boundary.
Okay.
You have to do the concept plan and adopt a comprehensive plan designation and implementing zoning for it. And so where, where it-
I said chastised on that then.
No, you're not, you're not chastised. You're not chastised.
And it is an important point to make with respect to the previous statement about the urban growth, uh, sorry, the urban reserve and rural reserve areas outside the UGB. Uh, because, um, city is not under any obligation to plan outside the UGB. In fact, legally cannot do that.
Exactly.
Uh, so, yeah.
Which gets me to the next question, which is, on all the other tanks, you say what the volume is, but you don't tell us what the volume of the Henrissi storage tank is.
Oh, it's two million gallons.
Yeah, but it's nowhere in any documentation.
It's nowhere in here. Well, we'll make sure it's in here.
It's not on any maps. It just, it's, there's a tank, and it is, how big is it?
If you look at the color drawing, it's on the little colored, if you have a color drawing.
The color drawing says existing storage reservoir.
Not, not to scale.
Every, and, but Mountain View has numbers on it and all the others, so.
We'll get that included because that's important.
Damon, on my map, it shows Henrissi.
It shows it, but it doesn't say the volume.
It is in table two dash five.
So we, we want to have the volume on-
Because you have a nice little picture of the reservoir, and you talk on the one before and the one after what their volume is, but you don't say anything about, it's like, is Henrissi a secret?
What page are you, what figure are you looking at, Damon?
Uh, page two dash seventeen.
Okay.
There's a nice, beautiful picture of the Henrissi tank, and it doesn't say volume.
Oh, and the photos. Okay.
Yeah. Uh, but it does on the tanks, all the other ones. Um, then the next thing is, uh, and I think this one gets to the critical issue about water supplies and high peaks and all that is, there's, I didn't see anything in the plant that addressed, uh, wells. And in particular, I believe that the city should have a specific plan of annexing water rights when they annex land. Um, especially when you get up in the Clermont area, which is an aquifer, you know, there's no flow rate regulations about fish in the middle of an underground aquifer. And at some point, Clackamas River, I mean, we just went through a huge legal battle to get the permits extended. Um, at some point, that's not gonna happen anymore either because everybody's up the level and it's fish win, and we still need water. So I think we should be aggressively, um, taking over, uh, the aquifers and wells that are available because those are not regulated. They are, but they're not regulated under fish-first sort of environment. So I think that needs to be included in a water master plan that says, as, you know, and, and I fought for this when I was on city council, right at the very end is when I came up, or I was a lame duck, so nobody listened to me. Um, but, um, and I've pushed it through South Fork also, but they said, well, we don't own land, so all we can do is recommend both Oregon City and West Lynn that they do that. And West Lynn has wells for backup, um, if something were to happen, a bridge collapse, whatever. We don't have wells for backup. When our eighteen million gallons are dry, we're hoping it rains so we can open the lids, but they're all solid, so there's no lids to open. Um, so again, um, CRW's pulling a million gallons a day out of a well. Um, it should be nice to have that ability, um, and under the control of the city, should that come, and not go knocking on people's doors who happen to have wells in the city and say, mind if we stick a hose up to the end of your well? And then we have to buy it from them. So as a condition of annexation, at the very least, we can say, and you sign your water rights over to the city. And it'd be nice if we had the funds to go back and buy the water rights out from underneath the people that already have them into the city. But that requires money that we clearly don't have from any of the scenarios being-
Yeah, right, right, right.
Phew.
Thanks.
That's what I say.
There, that's it.
He did all that one.
I noticed that. He barely even exhaled.
No, but, yeah, you have to exhale with speed.
But, well, we were watching.
Um, so-
It's my soapbox.
Yeah, thanks. We'll definitely get back to you on those recommendations, for sure. So on the twenty-fourth, staff will be presenting a staff report. We'll have some updated maps and information based on this. Um, we need to address, in particular, goal one, our public involvement process for this plan. Uh, the level of public involvement on a water master plan is usually pretty minimal, um, because it has to do with infrastructure, which tends to be, you know, necessary but boring. Um, we have had a citizen, CIC presentation back in September of two thousand ten. There was also a presentation of the city commission at a work session. Uh, as a legislative file, it's been noticed in the paper, uh, Clackamas Review. And, uh, and then there will be a series of, of public hearings at the city commission level as well. Um, and so we'll be making findings for goal one, as well as all of the other relevant, uh, public facilities goals, sustainability goals, water goals, et cetera.
Yeah, I would suggest that you go back to CIC. A year ago is a bit stale, and you have a wonderful PowerPoint that you can show them that-
That's a great idea.
That puts everything together, so. I mean, I have the old PowerPoint, but-
Oh, yeah.
It's a-
Phil, I, I, I mean, I'm gonna be slightly facetious, but I think if you say it's all about infrastructure and rate increases, you'll get some citizen involvement. Maybe not the kind that you would like, but, uh, it, it, I, I think people need to understand that it's, it's much more than infrastructure. It's, it's a, it's a full package that is comprised of many components. And unfortunately, some people won't see the forest for the trees. They'll, they'll focus on the, the tree that involves the rate increase, but-
Surely, yes.
That's, it's gotta go, I, I love the CIC. It's, it's also gotta go beyond that and make sure there's a-
I guess what you probably need to do, and it's pretty obvious, is that you just need to project the ramifications of what the rollbacks are gonna entail in the future. The graphs show it really well, but we're planners and people involved with land use and, but I just think that it needs to be brought out in a much more-
One thing I would add to those graphs is you have that blue line of, of income versus expense. Um, and it's up to you to verbalize that, how that extra blue's being spent. I would tack on to the end of the operating costs thing, the two-point-three million dollars for maintenance, so that people can see that, you know, we're not taking this extra money and, you know, throwing lavish parties and building palaces with it. It's still being used to a large extent. Um, because it's, you know, make it a different color, red, whatever it is. But then it shows, this is, this is what it costs to just make sure that when you flush, water comes out. And this is what it costs to make sure that in five years, when you flush, water will come out, which are two different things, but they stack up to make things happen.
I, I would say hand-in-hand with that is that you made the point earlier in your presentation that there was, uh, an ongoing cost of maintaining the system. It would be good, as, uh, what Damon is suggesting, to identify that ongoing cost as part of that revenue graph. Uh, it, and, and perhaps something along the lines of pay me now or pay me later can be incorporated into the presentation so people do understand that if you don't pay for it as you go, eventually the, the pay later includes borrowing money with interest versus paying for it with cash out of pocket as you go.
Yeah, that, that wasn't clearly articulated in the document, and it, and I think, again, to use the analogy of a credit card, people get that. And I think that needs to be brought out more.
Because people understand the concept of if you, if you have a twenty-year or thirty-year bond, there, there's interest attached to that. Whereas if you, if you can build into your funding the two-and-a-half million dollars every year to replace incrementally, uh, basically cash out of pocket, you're not borrowing that money. So there is a, a savings to be realized there. Uh, and somehow, I think, in that presentation, if that can be illustrated, it, it would improve the credibility, the argument that you have.
Thank you.
Use illustrations. Use illustrations.
Something that would help me was if there were some examples on the different scenarios for the rates, with the rollback and without the rollback.
Like what does that number actually mean?
Yeah. And, you know, as applicable to a single family.
Yes. Does the commission have any other questions or comments?
I move we continue this to October 24th?
A second.
We have a motion and a second?
And a finger.
Second.
So I have, I'll agree with the second and the motion, I just have, I just have a couple more little things. I was wondering if the plan is going to be revised to deal with the fact that Blue Heron is no longer operated, it was operating, it's got a lot of things in there that show how much water they use, well, they're not using that.
Yeah, the industrial water use has probably changed significantly.
And I also noticed that, one thing I was, as I said earlier, I was reading this in the car, and I got to the list of users, and it lists, and I said, "Well, I recognize the address, because it's the transfer station", and it lists Brown and Ferris, they haven't been the provider there at Metro for a number of years. So maybe if you just put Metro Transfer Station, it's just a little thing. But somebody's looking at that, and I said, "Yeah, they haven't", well, and I only know that because my husband's in recycling, that's why I know who's the operator there, you know, little juicy fun facts.
They just recycled the operators.
They did recycle the operators, that's right. And then, I guess another thing, maybe, it's a little bit of a side issue, so we, again, back to the partnership and the sharing of the facility of South Fork, has West Lynn, or has West Lynn gone through a water master plan process? And how are those two documents related and dovetailed? Because it seems to me they can't operate, again, separate from each other in a vacuum. So the West Lynn master plan for water and the Oregon City master plan for water, and how did the twain meet one another?
And South Fork has their own master plan.
And I know they have a master plan, I remember when that came up, and, you know, as Pete says, it's a little on the dry side, but it is critical to all of that operation. And I guess maybe in our water master plan, there should be some mention that we have overlapping jurisdictions, we have overlapping plans, and, not that we're going to totally analyze their plan, but some verbiage in there about, okay, this is kind of what their summary is, here's what this is happening, and this is how we fit into that bigger picture. Again, it gets back to my concern about, we're viewing this in a vacuum when we have other partners that are critical to what happens.
I don't, I don't see the relevance of West Lynn. They have one pipe that leaves us and goes over, and they do whatever they do with their thought, millions of gallons, and they can have the crappiest pipes in the world, or the newest pipes in the world, but that doesn't affect us.
Well, does it?
No, it doesn't.
Does it? What they do doesn't affect us?
Yeah. Because they buy their water wholesale, and it goes, South Fork pipes, all the way to the transfer station, where it then becomes Oregon City pipes and Oregon City water, and West Lynn pipes and West Lynn...
Well, that was, that was the question that I had, you know, is there any connection or overlap in terms of what's going on with the facility?
The only thing we've got is a emergency sharing agreement, that if their reservoir needs to be drained for maintenance, then we'll help them, and vice versa.
And then the park does, and we do, okay.
Which almost every jurisdiction has with every other jurisdiction.
Aren't you glad you asked?
Yes, I am, because some of us haven't had the benefit of being on the city commission, and/or as the member of the South Fork Water Board, so we don't know these things, which is why we're asking the question.
Do we have any other questions before we consider the motion?
Is, you know, someone who is in the planning field, everything is related.
Yes, ma'am.
Whether you say it's, or not, in our minds it is. It's all one big sort of continuum, and there are little points along the way where everything comes into play, depending on, you know, it's kind of like the whack-a-mole thing. One comes up, and the other one goes down, and they're all in the same continuum.
Yeah, but we don't care about the moles that pop up in West Lynn.
That's right.
And you're saying that on the record.
Yes. I don't care about West Lynn moles.
Well, I will say that I do care about West Lynn.
Well, you can care, I care about West Lynn, I just don't care about West Lynn moles.
I was using that as a metaphor. I'll call for the question. Yes, it is getting too deep.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Mayby, second by Commissioner Espy, to continue to October 24th, the Water Master Plan, L1002. Let's see, scribbled down my road sheet. Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Let's see, Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Kidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinckam?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And long live the moles.
No, they won't let me shoot my shotgun at them in the city limits anymore.
So the next item on the agenda, I can actually go up to the dais and show you, because I apologize for the technical problems we had earlier, but...
Thank you, everybody, for coming, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending.
Comment on CRW, appreciate the question.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Let's click through to that. Thank you, Nancy and Walt.
Thank you for your time.
All right, so if you keep it on the switch for the screen, we'll be able to see this. I'll just go to the city website. Where...
You're still loading. There you go.
Says corrupt file. Yikes.
It always says that.
Does it? Oh, okay.
Oh, you've never set up Windows 8, oh, Lord. Because there's Windows 9 now to set up.
Come on. Under construction.
I could try to download it on my air phone.
www...
Dot SteveJobs.com?
All right, let's see how that works. All right. People call and say, "I cannot find anything on your website."
I will say, there might be a little tiny bit of truth to that.
Ours is much worse.
This is called road test.
Our system at work does not like PDC's website. It takes forever to download anything off of this thing. It is. But once I get it, it's good, but it's looking at it as like a foreign organism coming into its system, and it's going, "Aye."
PDC is a foreign organism.
Our website's terrible.
I bet you the smile, Karen.
Don't make me get up and come over there.
All right, so I'll skip the commission report. So, as the Citizen Advisory, sorry, Citizen Involvement Committee has been successful in getting a lot more of the neighborhood associations up and running now, and we've been happy to attend several of those meetings to discuss our street tree policies and codes. And we've done two so far. We went to the, let's see, Caulfield Neighborhood Association back in September, and the Tower Vista Neighborhood Association two weeks ago. Tomorrow night, we'll go to Barclay Hills Neighborhood Association, and what we're doing is presenting the city's procedure for street trees. And we're recognizing that we have a lot of older subdivisions that were constructed with planter strip widths of as narrow as 2.5 feet, up to our current standard of 4.5 feet. And we're not, and we're also seeing a lot of sidewalk lifting, curb damage, in some cases, but mostly what we see is the sidewalk panels lifting. And when that happens, the abutting property owner sometimes is cited for tripping hazard by the code enforcement department. And they are responsible for making that repair, which can vary in cost from, you know, just reporing a small section to reporing the entire section. So there are definitely cost concerns that abutting property owners have. We haven't been able to address how those, how the city could alleviate some of those costs yet, but what we've been able to do is explain the benefit of having a comprehensive street tree code in place, and what benefit trees provide, what the, and so I'll just go through my PowerPoint briefly. And you'll see as we, at the, toward the end of the PowerPoint, we've included some of the results from each of the, for each of the neighborhoods, on the condition of the sidewalks, based on the survey that the Public Works Department did. They had two summer interns who went out and measured lips on curbs and whether those were ADA, American with Disabilities Act compliant. The threshold for what constitutes a tripping hazard, at the time they did that survey, is about half an inch, so it's already fairly small, and the word in the street is that it is actually going to switch to a quarter inch, it could be even smaller threshold. And so you'll see that. Let's see if I can't make this a little...
Would you click the Adobe Updater box, and make that go away at the bottom? Yes. The Adobe Updater, make it go away.
In the corner?
At the bottom.
At the bottom, it says Adobe Updater.
There, thank you.
Thank you.
You're good, it's gone.
So, let's see.
Did they also analyze whether or not the quality of the sidewalk was up to standard? I mean...
Yeah, they looked at a lot of things.
Some concrete varies by its...
They looked at dishing, cracking, cupping, lifting of panels, and if a pan, and panel lifting is the one that the code enforcement people are, you know, are most noticing. And, but if a property owner is, wants to be proactive about this sort of thing, and get ahead of the curve, and not be cited by code enforcement, and it's definitely the tree that's causing the problem, they'll come in and they'll talk to Public Works and to Planning separately, and request a permit to remove or replace, remove and replace the tree. We require per code that the, there be an arborist certificate, a certified arborist sign off on the condition of the tree, unless there's a hazardous situation, because that, our code, a hazardous situation allows the property owner to replace a tree one for one, regardless of the size. This has worked for the last three years. We have some situations where there's no hazard, in which case we require more than one tree be replaced in accordance with the table in the code. So I'll go, I'll get into the meat of this.
Are you going to make this fill the screen, or it can't do it?
Um, it doesn't appear to be able to, want to do that.
Let's see, where's the little icon where it's...
We can just, yeah, we can do that, let's just do that. Thanks for that. Great. So Oregon City has a canopy cover based on this 2009 study of approximately 26% compared with Portland and Lake Oswego, where we're not as high. Bearing in mind that there are some fairly large stands of forest within the Portland city limit, which bumps that percentage up. But the question really is, what should, what is a healthy forest canopy in an urbanized area, given the fact that you've got infrastructure, rooftops, yards, and things of that nature? So this is a, this is a complete percentage based on aerial photography that PSU does. One of the best ways for a city to preserve forest canopy as it urbanizes is within the public right of way, because that's part that the city controls. And to the extent that we can also control the width of the planter strips, the large, we can get larger street trees and larger canopy, and greater canopy as we, as we urbanize. The Clackamas County UGB number is for the unincorporated area, for the unincorporated area within the UGB. We talk about the benefits of street trees, in particular shading our streets, carbon storage and uptake, wildlife habitat, what it does for real estate values and community health, both mental and physical, and how it affects water quality with respect to not only shading the streets and reducing the temperature of the water flowing off the streets into the public system, and ultimately into the rivers, but also reducing the impact of rainfall on the ground in the urbanized area. Cool of the temperatures in the rivers, the better, the greater the oxygen-carrying capacity, which helps fish and other aquatic life. We cited the Portland study, which was done in 2007, which looked at thousands of home sales in a two-year period, mostly, I believe, in the southeast part of the city, where there's a substantial amount of homes with large planter strips next to them. And they found that the total value of the street trees in Portland was 1.1 billion, and translating to $45 million annually.
You know what's interesting about that? Southeast is an older part of town.
Yeah.
So southeast is going to have a lot more trees, because they would have, they would have been planted years and years ago.
Right, and if you think of, you know, Laurelhurst area, where you've got almost eight to 10-foot planter strips, I think a lot of that...
Four foot, yeah.
Yeah, and Laz Edition has something similar, and again, that's all southeast, northeast.
As a, maybe this is too early, but has the city considered a grant program for those people that are concerned about putting their sidewalks in and not being able to afford to do so? Maybe just putting 5,000 bucks into a, into a grant fund?
Metro enhancement?
And then, for repair, for people to dip into and repair if they can't afford?
Yeah, we talked to David Wimmer briefly about this, and the possibility of allowing what's called a Bancroft loan.
Yeah.
And allows them to pay it off over time. The thing is that, yeah, the contractor needs to be paid on the day the, or when the repair goes in.
Right.
So if, it would have to come out of the general fund, in order to, to, you know, offset the cost. It's something that we haven't gone further down the road in discussing yet, but it's something that we've talked about.
The new areas don't really qualify for community development block grant, like we did in the GLOP one, so we got a bunch of ours repaired.
The pavement fee that we currently charge is a, basically curb face to curb face. It doesn't include the area behind the, behind the curb. If John Lewis is looking into this in a little more detail with Nancy and with David Wimmer to see what we could offer, but no guarantees or promises there.
Right.
Yeah. So they estimated in Lake Oswego, more than $1.9 million in property resale value per year is due to the presence of trees, and I believe that was both commercial and residential properties, but there's several studies obviously have been shown there. City's first adopted street tree code was in 1998. Prior to that, we didn't have a street tree list, and we didn't have a street tree list until 2001, did we?
Yes, and I planted my trees in front of my house in 1992.
92.
And we had a list for our neighborhood that were appropriate.
Was it an adopted list, or was it just a...
I don't know, but it was a list.
And was it a list because you're in the conservation district and not a citywide list?
It was a list for, there was a specific list that was for the McLaughlin neighborhood that was given out to people.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, I stand corrected.
Now, I could have handed it to myself, because I was still working for the city.
Do you have a copy? That'd be great.
I may.
Okay.
I may have it.
Well, I think what's, what, yeah, okay, so...
It was developed by landscape architect Andrew Rice through a contract with the city.
Oh, okay, well, I went looking, I didn't find one, but I would, and the one that we have in place currently needs to be updated. We've been relying, if somebody wants to use a species which is found on the Portland street tree list for the same planter strip, or Gresham, or Milwaukee, or Gladstone, we'll accept that. So, point of the PowerPoint here is to kind of explain how this, how we got to where we are now, and we're going to be living with this problem for a long time.
You know what would have, if I had realized would have helped me, is not only an appropriate tree for my planning strip, but an appropriate... tree for my planting strip, but an appropriate tree for the soil, because I'm in the rocky part, and so instead of the tree roots going down, it wants to go that way, where the water is.
And what's come up is people have said, even in the more recent subdivisions, in the absence of inspection of the planting by the city-
Yeah, people put in weird stuff.
People have put stuff in, whether it's construction debris, and it's not a proper soil amendment, obviously, and there's inadequate space for the roots to grow, so they're being forced to the surface and following irrigation lines and such things.
Of course.
Yeah, um, that's where we're at, so we really need to kind of tighten down the level of inspection on the street trees, um, and develop a program to do that, to ensure that we're not, we're, we're absolutely waiting till the last minute to require the replacement of that tree, and that tree has a healthy life and is actually having a benefit.
That's exactly what the planter strip on our street is, it is part of the construction debris, because I dug, cause I dug it out.
Uh-huh.
And we were amazed at the number of rocks and just garbage that, you know, construction garbage from when they built the street that was in there. I mean, again, if I'd had just a little more knowledge, I would not have put in the type of tree that I had, I put in.
Right, and I think it's-
And that's going back to, what, eight, 1900s when they built that street. So there's still a lot of weird stuff in there.
Yeah, so it's a problem. This explains, you know, when a tripping hazard exists.
I'd say that's more than a tripping hazard.
I think that, I think that that is a, that's a safety hazard.
Yeah, so that, if we have an imminent hazard, uh, you know, you can take it out and-
Where is that?
Oh, that's off the web.
Oh, okay, that's not here.
It's not here.
Okay.
Um, and we require replacement with a tree of at least 1.5-inch caliper. Um, that was a decision that was made when we, uh, last amended the code, was because the difference in cost between the 1.5 mil, 1.5-inch and the 2-inch that was previously in the code is significant, and it gains that half-inch increment fairly quickly, you know, one or two years. Um, it was sort of a policy decision to, to put that in. Uh, so the sidewalk repair is public works realm, um, they have a reduced fee permit, um, which I believe is $63. Chuck Carter does probably two to three inspections for each repair permit that's pulled, so it's, I don't believe that $63 actually goes very far with respect to his time, he goes before and after, and, so that's something that, um, the city is sort of subsidizing that, that inspection fee. Um, it has to meet minimum public works and ADA requirements. Uh, with respect to the tree permit, we don't charge a fee for the tree permit, um, we use our current street tree list or an arborist recommendation, or like I said, an adjacent municipalities. Uh, one of the, I'll, I'll get to that later. Then we inspect before and after. So here's some of the sidewalk analysis for Tower Vista. Um, you asked about the condition rating, um, the bottom chart here shows that in the Tower Vista neighborhood, and there's a graphic here which we can go to, um-
Forget even where that is anymore.
Very few that were excellent, um, majority were about above average, about a quarter of them were average, and about 10% below average, five, 6% poor. 238 raised panels, um, is a lot, and how that looks on a chart is like this, and you see an obvious correlation between, uh, planter strip width and sidewalk conditions. I, I think Jason Fraser in engineering estimated that about 95% of the panel lifting was due to tree roots. And so, um, I think we're gonna do this inventory again when we get funding, um, in next summer, to see how we're doing, but, um, you can see Tugs Landing, there are no raised panels, and those are the four and a half, the newer plant, newer homes and newer planter strips.
Some Amesworth Estates, it's-
Um, what are, what are some of the alternatives to removal that the city engineer will approve? Pervious pavers, meandering sidewalks, putting a sidewalk in an easement at the upper, with, um, behind, behind the sidewalk, uh, shaving down roots and replacing the panel, uh, but the tree may not survive, uh, and all of those alterations must meet city standards and ADA requirements. However, we're trying to be flexible with people if they really wanna save a tree. Uh, a lot of the time, they wanna make sure that the, uh, repair is gonna last, and so they're, the typical thing is that the sidewalk panel gets replaced and the tree gets replaced as well.
Did anybody request a rubber sidewalk yet?
Not yet.
We have previous pavers on, on, on Ryland's Lane on a tree at, near the Rose Farm.
Okay, yeah.
We have an easement, it goes around it, we didn't want to take the tree out, or they didn't, and so it goes around it and it's worked quite well.
Well, that'd be good. If we can get suggestions for things that have been used in other parts of the city, we're more than open to it. I think it's particularly important with respect to large trees-
This one's large.
Yeah, and, uh, stuff that's historic potentially, um, and, uh, we can hope that as we move forward and we have more appropriate species replanted back in the planter strips, then we'll have a more sustainable policy as we move forward. Um, but I think we're gonna be living this, with this for some time. The other thing that is helpful is getting the right tree in the right place, observing necessary clearances from hydrants, uh, intersections, streetlights, and there's a lot more stuff in the right-of-way besides those things. We also have meter boxes, private utility lines, uh, you know, other things that people are putting, planting in the right-of-way in addition to, into, in addition to street trees. We are recommending to people to install a root barrier, um, parallel to the sidewalk and to the curb, uh, at the time of planting, um, and that helps a little bit. Proper pruning, um, not overwatering and overfertilizing the trees, um, once they're established, and, uh, always recommending using a certified arborist. The way that our staffing works right now, we don't have a city forester, as you know, we have a parks arborist who concentrates mostly on city property, right-aways, and parks, and Mountain View Cemetery, for example. He has been working with us to come out and help inspect certain trees that need a condition assessment, um, but if there's a, if there's a hazard, we don't call on Larry Potter to do that, you know, he's got other responsibilities. And, uh, I am thinking of getting an arbor certification, but it may be a couple of years before I, I move forward with that, and then you would have a municipal arborist who could at least do the damage assessments and issue the tree permits with that much more knowledge about, you know, the condition of the tree itself and what the option's for.
Do you recommend to people that they use the watering bags that you can get for the trees?
Whatever I think is the state of the art right now, um, like Friends of Trees uses those in Portland, um, and I actually spoke, spoke to the Friends of Trees, not to their field representative, but to their CEO and how, and with respect to partnering with Friends of Trees in the future, uh, they require that the city match a certain mixed in, and then they train a neighborhood volunteer to serve as a trainer in a particular neighborhood. So it's potentially something that, um, you would build local capacity at the neighborhood level, uh, and, uh, they would, they would help out with tree stock, pre-approved tree species and those sorts of things.
We worked with them when we had our, when, Damon, were you around when we did our last neighborhood tree planting in McLaughlin? It may have been before your time, but anyway, we worked cooperatively with, with them to, to do that, and, uh, worked out all right.
Yeah, and, uh, Natural Resources Committee, we have four members, uh, we'll have our first meeting in November, and they will have purview over, uh, recommendations on, you know, anything that affects natural resources in the city, um, with respect to policy recommendations and those sorts of things. They are, under their current bylaws, also responsible for the city heritage tree program, which we have adopted a process for, but we don't have, we haven't gotten the, uh, trees through that process yet, so, um, they would also be responsible for updating our street tree list, which we wanna keep as a flexible document as more hybrids become available and there's a lot more choices and things like that. So, um, we're looking to refine this presentation as we move forward, each neighborhood's a little bit different, some of the questions are different, uh, some of the neighbor, neighborhoods have been hit harder than others because of the condition of the sidewalks and, and the types of species that are in there, um, so we're trying to be flexible as we, uh, but typically it takes, uh, about an hour and a half to present this and answer all the questions that come up, not only with respect to trees in the public right-of-way, but trees in general in the city. So, for the time being, our, our, uh, tree code is divided into development review regulations on trees, and natural resource overlays trees, and street trees. We don't have a comprehensive tree policy outside of those either environmentally insensitive zones or development, or properties that are under development review, which is typical for a municipality our size, um, unless you're Lake Oswego and you really put a lot of effort, resources, and staffing into, into a more comprehensive tree code, which Commissioner Espy knows a lot about, I'm sure.
We've had lots of fun with the tree code.
Yeah. Very good, thank you. Does anybody have any other questions? Pete?
Um, how does it work when there aren't sidewalks in neighborhoods?
Right. Um, to the actual pavement, or?
Yeah, it does a, is there recommendations to, to the homeowner to fix the tree, I mean, Austin Ball?
If, if the tree is planted in, well, if it, if it's over six inches in size and it's functioning and planted as a right-of-way tree, you kinda have to make that determination first. If there's no planter strip, there are some trees, I think they're just growing right out of the road pavement in parts of the city, but, yeah, but-
I was thinking, there's no sidewalks in River Crest and-
Right. Yeah, a little different situation over there. Um, it can function very well if you plant the trees, you know, behind the sidewalk and then they grow over the street, um, those are essentially private trees though, and unless the city encumbers that property with a, with a covenant or an easement, we have no authority to regulate it right now.
Well, I, I think what he's saying is, uh, like, in my neighborhood, I'm up by the hospital, there's some huge fir trees that are 10 feet away from the road, and if a root decides it's gonna go that way and it starts heaving the pavement, whose responsibility is it to fix the pavement and/or deal with the tree?
Yeah, um, code says that active sidewalk to curb is maintained by-
Just from a sidewalk or curb?
Yeah, and then the pavement itself is public works responsibility.
Shave it down and pave it over?
Yeah, I think what-
But if the tree dies, then who's responsible for?
I think that's actually one of those areas we're figuring out right now.
Yeah, that, we'd have to evaluate on a case-by-case basis, I believe the, the tree's the owner's responsibility, yeah.
But don't cut it down.
Yeah, but if, it's a tough one. But if it is on private property, we, we can't require that it be saved, and if it's causing a traffic problem because of that root, that's the primary concern, because the city has some liability there.
I think it's a, I think it's a traffic control device at that point.
Just keep paving it over and the bump gets higher and-
Keeps those people from speeding.
Yeah, and they would definitely talk to the owner about that.
Oh man, any idea when the ADA change might come?
No, but we can find out and report back, um-
Well, it sounds, I mean-
Yeah, it's not something that's, it's not something they would notify a local jurisdiction about necessarily, uh, I think it would be, I'm not sure how that would be promulgated.
Well, it would be promulgated as a rule that would be incorporated into the building code.
Yeah, so-
And it depends how long it would take to incorporate it.
Those ADA devices?
I mean, right now, they're, they're warning people that it's coming down the pike, and so it just gives that much more impetus to the, to the permitting process. It doesn't change the process for us, is the difference between, you know, quarter inch and a half inch.
I'm just curious how many sidewalks, though, don't have street trees but have a quarter inch rise because people were, just, that's how they laid it out, it was in that code and they walked away from it, 'cause, you know, and it's been that way for 50 years, and now is it, they're gonna have to rip up their entire sidewalk?
Actually, actually, it's not retroactive.
Yeah.
It's only for new.
Yeah.
We have the, the care center near our house, and unfortunately, two or three of them in wheelchairs, they're constantly in the street, and I just shudder every time I see them, because I just, there's another street they could go down that doesn't have as much traffic, but one guy, he just comes buzzing right up Washington Street and has almost been hit several times by cars. And it's just, he says, "Well, I can't get up the sidewalk," and I said, "Well, you could go back."
The ADA is not retroactive, but if you built a new sidewalk, then it has to comply. And part of that is, it does allow transitions, uh, you're actually allowed up to a half-an-inch elevation change, but-
You gotta ramp it.
There's a, a ramp distance that gets you to that quarter of an inch.
Oh, okay.
So, there, there's ways of dealing with that, and I think actually the, the, the new regulations, uh, went into effect this year.
Okay.
But they haven't filtered their way into the building code yet.
Let's see, yeah, 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 what this doesn't show is the ramp analysis that they also did, so at the, at the intersections of streets, what's missing. Any other questions for Pete?
No, although at some point, I wouldn't mind having an ADA explanation of, of the ramps, because some of them don't make a whole lot of sense. You've got two, two ramps coming from the street, and there's like, an eighth of a, or three or four inches separating the two ramps coming up, so there's this big island by the little corner.
Technically, that's not ADA, you, you have to have transition landings between ramps. ADA is pretty clear about that, you, you've got maximum, minimum slopes, and you've got maximum distances.
Fourth percent, I think.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm seeing this happen on new construction or reconstruction.
Right, well, they're not built right, and, and you also have flat landings required top and bottom of ramps, so, uh, yeah, if, if you've got a condition like you're describing, it's not compliant.
Okay.
Okay, uh, if we have no other business, then, uh, let's have a motion to adjourn.
Just when the wedding got done?
Second.
Pretty much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed by act of elections.
Thank you.